I'm ready, you? Okay. I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under our and indivisible for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I have a roll call, please?
Counselor Clements.
Present.
Counselor Langivan.
Present.
Counselor Markucci.
Present.
Counselor McDonald.
Present.
Counselor Moriarty.
Present.
Counselor Nicola.
Present.
Counselor Pellicwen.
Present.
Counselor Regis.
Sure.
And Counselor Vandal.
Present.
Eight here.
Thank you. Consider, Agenda Item Number Three is Consider and Accept Town Council Meeting Minutes of Monday, September 10th.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Corrections? Roll call, please.
Counselor Langivan.
Yes.
Counselor Markucci.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty.
Yes.
Counselor Nicola.
Yes.
Counselor Pellicwen.
Yes.
Counselor Vandal.
Yes.
Counselor Clements.
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Four, Subcommittee Reports, A General Government. Counselor Markucci.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I'm not that chairman.
Sorry. I'll be reading these. It's Counselor Regis. Almost got away with that one. A meeting of the General Government Subcommittee was held on Wednesday, September 19th, in the Rice Conference Room. In attendance were Chairwoman Regis, Committee Members Counselor Langivan, Counselor Pellicwen, Citizen Members Larry Spinelli and Michael Janes. Also in attendance were Counselor Clements, Town Manager Clark, Chief Sherrett, Charlene Laporte, Roger Cowett, and Estelle Cowett. Chairwoman Regis called the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Agenda Item Number One, Review and Vote to Adopt Local Option Increase to Benefits Payable to Widows and Widowers of Disabled Public Employees Under Section 101, Chapter 139 of the Acts of 2012. Mrs. Laporte explained the new legislature change, giving the local option of raising the benefits payable to Section 101 beneficiaries from $9,000 to $12,000 annually. She said the Southbridge Retirement Board had already voted to adopt the option and is seeking approval from the Town Council to adopt this change. The change would only affect about six individuals and the increase would be covered by investment earnings. A motion was made by Counselor Langivan, seconded by Larry Spinelli, with a favorable recommendation to council to adopt the local option increase to benefits payable to widows and widowers of disabled public employees. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, five to nothing. Agenda Item Number Two, Review and Vote to Present to Council for Ratification the Acceptance of Mass DOT Grant in the Amount of $6,120 to Purchase a Zero-Turn Radius Mower for the Airport Maintenance and to allocate $1,529.99 towards this purchase from allocated DPW budget funds for equipment repairs and maintenance. Mr. Clark stated the Mass DOT has come out and reviewed the present equipment used at the airport and offered us a grant for the purchase of a zero-turn radius mower. The state did the procurement and bid work for this equipment. The airport did not have a zero-turn radius mower, therefore this equipment is not replacement equipment. A motion was made by Counselor Langivan, seconded by Larry Spinelli, with a favorable recommendation to council to accept Mass DOT grant in the amount of $6,120 to purchase a zero-turn radius mower for the airport maintenance and to allocate $1,529.99 towards this purchase from allocated DPW budget funds for equipment repairs and maintenance. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, nine, five to nothing. Agenda Item Number Three, Review and Vote to Present to Council Proposed Amendments to Bylaw, Chapter Six, Section Six-Dash-100, Quote, "Licenses and Licensing Regulations for the Town of Southbridge," End Quote. Chief Sherrett stated this item was reviewed for a few years ago and due to the times and amount of secondhand items being brought to the dealerships, regulations need to be tightened. This bylaw change would help in being able to identify illegal activity in the selling and receiving of secondhand property. Mr. Janes felt this bylaw would put a hindrance on the small dealers. Mr. Janes made a motion to institute a $100 threshold. There was no second to the motion. A motion was made by Counselor Langivan, seconded by Larry Spinelli, with a favorable recommendation to council to make an amendment to Bylaw, Chapter Six, Section Six, One-Dash-100, Licenses and Licensing Regulations for the Town of Southbridge as per the attached draft. Vote by a show of hands, four, for it, one opposed. And that was Mr. Janes. Agenda Item Number Four, Review and Vote to Recommend to Council for Ratification the Contract Between the Town of Southbridge and Stan Kobinski Incorporated for the Demolition of Two Derelict Properties for a Total of $37,535. Mr. Clark discussed the properties involved in the RFP, eleven row houses on Mill Street and a building at 18 Chester Street. Five bids were received and Stan Kobinski Incorporated was the lowest bidder at $37,535. A motion was made by Counselor Langivan, seconded by Larry Spinelli, with a favorable recommendation to council to ratify the contract with Stan Kobinski Incorporated for the demolition of two derelict properties for a total amount of $37,535. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, five to nothing. A motion to adjourn was made by Counselor Langivan, seconded by Larry Spinelli. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, five to nothing. Meeting adjourned at 8:10. Respectfully submitted Evelyn Rivera Recording Clerk. And I don't know if, I don't believe there is a, I don't believe there's a General Government Subcommittee on the books right now. B, DPW, Counselor Vandal.
No report, no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Thank you. C, Education and Human Services. Counselor Markucci.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow evening. And the agenda, I have three agenda items. I did receive some complaints. We're going to have a discussion about the infestation of cats in the town of Southbridge. And we are also going to discuss radio and camera coverage to the middle and high school buildings. And the third agenda item, if anyone's interested, is discuss supplemental budget requests for the middle high school and related changes and costs of impact of changes to be funded from the anticipated excess revenue and deficiency accounts. So if anyone's interested in any of these three topics, I would urge them to attend. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. D, Planning and Development. Counselor Clements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A meeting of the Planning and Development Subcommittee was held Monday, September 10th, 2012, in the Rice Conference Room. Subcommittee Members Counsel Moriarty, Citizens Members Evelyn Petrelli and Jamie Staffsley. Also in attendance were Counselor Nicola, Town Manager Clark, Cassandra Ackley, Rose Canoyer, Mark Morin, Otto Prohasky, and Gus Steves. Counselor McDonald was excused. We called the meeting at 6:02. Agenda Item One, Vote to Ratify CDBG Social Services Contracts for Literacy Volunteers and House of Destiny. Mrs. Ackley stated that, stated these two social service agencies had been previously reviewed and elected by the council to receive the FY 2012 grant funds. A motion was made by Mr. Staffsley, seconded by Counselor Nicola, with a favorable recommendation to council to ratify the contract with House of Destiny for FY 2012 CDBG grant funds in the amount of $50,000. Vote by a show of hands, three, one. Mrs. Petrelli opposed. A motion was made by Mrs. Petrelli and seconded by Mr. Staffsley with a favorable recommendation to council to ratify the contract with literacy volunteers for FY 2012 CDBG grant funds in the amount of $50,000. Vote by a show of hands, three, one. Counselor Nicola abstained. Agenda Item Number Two, Review Draft of Request for Proposals for Social Services Projects for FY 13 CDBG Application. Mrs. Ackley stated the town will elect to support up to three social service projects to receive grant funds for FY 2013. Counselor Nicola expressed concern over repeat funding for previously funded programs. Discussion was held on the reasoning for the added funding. A motion was made by Counselor Moriarty and seconded by Mr. Staffsley with a favorable recommendation to council to accept the request for proposal, RFP, as written. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, four, zero. Agenda Item Three, Briefing by the Economic Development Commission on Its Current Initiatives. Mrs. Ackley stated the Economic Development Commission has been working on several different initiatives. She introduced Mark Morin, Chairman of the Commission. Mr. Morin gave an overview of what they are trying to accomplish. Some of the ideas include help with the schools with higher education. They are trying to bring other colleges to the area. Gathering contacts to try and help with the commercial drive properties. Getting landlord involvement. Doing a landlord of the year award. Having a professional video of the town showing the economic part of the area. Creating an incubator where a building in town would be offered to start-up businesses where rents are low and office equipment is shared. Putting out a newsletter on the economic development of Southbridge. Other items, a new tea shop will be opening in town. Nana Bee's will be located at 12 Crane Street. There are several new companies coming to the area soon, but no other information was available at this time. A motion to adjourn was made by Counselor Moriarty, seconded by Mr. Staffsley. All in favor. We adjourned the meeting at 6:50 PM. Respectfully submitted Evelyn Rivera Recording Clerk. Currently have no meeting scheduled.
Thank you, Counselor. E, Protection of Persons and Property. Counselor Langivan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no report and no meeting scheduled at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Five, Chairwoman's Announcements. I don't have any. Six, Town Managers' Announcements. Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have several. If I could work my way through these, I would appreciate the indulgence. The first is the Southbridge Cultural Council has applications that are available for the 2013 funding cycle. These, this process has changed this year, so I just wanted to let folks know because I know we've had a fairly healthy amount of applicant pool in the past. Applicants are no longer to be distributed or accepted by the town clerk's office, so as to streamline the process. All submission of completed applications will be through the town manager's office and must be time and date stamped. All applicants are directed to and must use the official Mass Cultural Council application as revised in 2012 by the MCC. Applications can be filled out online in PDF form and printed. Applications for grants are found on the website, massculturalcouncil.org. Also, the revised cultural council criteria requirements on the Southbridge Cultural Council page must be read and complied with as presented for any and all requests for grant funding. Any application received by the Southbridge Cultural Council failing to comply with the criteria will be subject to possible rejection. The submission deadline set by MCC is October 15th, 2012, and can be postmarked as such. Per the MCC, late applications cannot be accepted. For Southbridge, all hand-delivered applications must be in Southbridge Town Hall, Town Manager's Office, time and date stamped by the office by 4:00 PM at the close of business. And that's actually signed by Michelle LeBeuf and Ted Bartlett, the chairperson and treasurer, respectively. Also, we did receive note that the Massachusetts Cultural Council does have $8 million available for grant programs throughout the Commonwealth of Mass, so our portion of that would be a fraction. Also, I received some information from our Health Department that we are a moderate risk for the eastern equine encephalitis. And there's been 14 cases of West Nile virus in Massachusetts. And they are asking that even though we are at a moderate level, they do ask us to take into account certain considerations. And some of those considerations are recommended at like the high-level communities. And they have a couple items here. Beware of peak mosquito hours from dusk till dawn. It is strongly recommended to reschedule any and all outside activities, including sports events, barbecues, evening concerts, et cetera. Next, wear long sleeve, long pants, long sleeve shirts, long pants and socks when outdoors. This will help keep the mosquitoes away from the skin. Apply insect repellent when outdoors. Repellents containing DEET and others provide protection against mosquitoes. Please read the product label and remove any or all standing water in fields or playgrounds. Avoid camping overnight near freshwater swamps to reduce the risk of mosquito exposure. For more information, folks can contact the Health Department, 508-764-4252. Or you can also go on to the state website, www.mass.gov/agr/mosquito/index, or just www.mass.gov/dph/wnv. I have received some material and had an opportunity to converse with the town clerk as well as the town attorney, that we did receive the special legislation in regards to the charter changes. Unfortunately, the governor didn't sign it until after our opportunity to get it on to the November ballot. So I am looking for a little bit of direction tonight from the council. In the review of the various languages in Section Two of each of the charter changes, it says that the following question shall be placed upon the official ballot and submitted to the voters of the town of Southbridge at a regular or special election to be held in the year 2012. So that language, that they use the word shall, I have been advised by Representative Durant that we do have to have the election this year. Really, the two options that are available to the town, one would be to hold an election most likely in December. The other option would be to submit a request to our legislative group, our Senator and Rep., and ask them to change that number from 2012 to 2013. My concern was, my concern is, at the September special election or the September primary, I think we had a 6% turnout. And I believe that in, in the election cycles, as my experience has showed, that during a town election, you're bound to get a little bit more activity levels. So I think it makes some sense to try to put it on for the June. If I can kind of get a consensus from the council, what the council feels, if they want me to go in that direction. If not, then by mandate of what was passed, I'll ask the town clerk to put together an election calendar for a date in December. That cost would be about $10,000, between $9,000 and $10,000. It is somewhat ironic that the whole reason we did this was to try to put it on for a ballot, and it took so long to get out of the legislature that we've missed our opportunity. So that's where we are in terms of that issue. I guess in the conversation with the town attorney and the town clerk, we believe that it serves the best interest of the democratic process to move it to the June meeting and avoid the cost of having the $9,000 to $10,000, which was one of the, I thought, factors that the council had. But with that as a suggestion, unless I hear otherwise, I'll act accordingly.
Do you want this in the way of vote?
Actually, it is a legislative initiative, so a vote from the body, I think, makes sense.
Okay. Before I hear from you, I'm going to entertain a motion, and then there'll be discussion. I'm going to entertain a motion to direct the town manager to request from the legislature that a change be made to allow this special legislation to be placed on the June 2013 ballot, to change it from 2012 to 2013.
So moved. Just if I could, and I don't mean to, but the actual wording that they have is voters of the town of Southbridge had a regular or special election to be held in the year 2012. What I thought would be really simple is just ask them to change 2012 to 2013. And if by some chance there was an election that needed to be held earlier that we could piggyback on, or that would help to just give us some flexibility on that.
Can you make that work, Stacy? Can you write that out?
All it would be, would be to amend Section Two of the special legislation for the 10 special legislation articles that were adopted by the legislature and approved by the governor, and to change the number or the year from 2012 to 2013, with the understanding that the town will attempt to have this on the June ballot, if not sooner.
I can have that. I just don't have it all right now. But I can gather that and make sure it's all in the minutes.
Okay. And I have a motion? And a second? Okay, now discussion. Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was going to say I agree with the town manager. It's more prudent to do it in conjunction with the annual election in June for the max turnout, max exposure to the democratic process. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Anybody else? Can I? Counselor Markucci.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to the town manager. So, Mr. Clark, if for some reason there's a special election, this would be added prior to June 2013, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm all set, thanks.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Counselor Markucci.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty.
Yes.
Counselor Nicola.
Yes.
Counselor Pellicwen.
Yes.
Counselor Regis.
Yes.
Counselor Vandal.
Yes.
Counselor Clements.
Yes.
Counselor Langivan.
Yes.
Nine yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Madam Chair. Just two other items. One, we did receive some material from Senator Moore, just talking a little bit about the budget season for next year, and he is concerned in regards to Congress at the federal level in terms of the $1.2 trillion deficit savings. And some of the impact of that, he believes, may ripple through to the local level. I just, I will be providing probably at the next meeting and certainly at Subcommittee meetings, that our finances are in better shape than I had anticipated, which is always nice to report. So I will be making some recommendations, because our numbers came in more favorably than anticipated, to put money away in reserves, which I know has been expressed. Also, to do some items that need to be done as part of the school reconfiguration, so I will bring that up at Subcommittee. But I thought it was interesting to, Senator Moore has kind of highlighted that there is some, I hate to use the word trickle-down, but some trickle-down at the federal level if things don't go well and them trying to get their fiscal house in order, that that may have some negative ramifications for us. And even though our numbers came back favorably on our excess deficiency, some of those are one-time items. And because they are one-time items, I'm trying to study and analyze what that means. Certainly, it's a good sign that the numbers came back favorably. That's always a good sign. And I think putting money into reserves is also a prudent thing to do in light of us trying to do permanent financing on the school project. Actually, two other things. Just one, the Harrington Hospital is going to perform, this is from Whitewater, our Water Department. Harrington Hospital will perform a fire pump flow test on Thursday, September 27th, at 9:00 PM. The location tested will be Harrington Hospital at 100 South Street. Procedure will include testing the operation and capacity of each fire pump on the property. That is going to disrupt some of the water in the system, so as always, please check your, check the water before washing clothes, because there may be some sediment that builds up in the laterals. And the way to clear that is just to run the water before you do laundry. And then lastly, on the election topic, I did receive a memo this morning from the town clerk, and this is a little bit different. We are having a special election for the Bay Path Vote. That is Thursday, October 4th, so a Thursday instead of a Tuesday, October 4th. And here's another nuance, the polls will be open from noon time until 8:00 PM. Normally, they're open for a longer period of time, but I guess due to the language involving the regional school system, that it's an eight-hour block of time. So the regional school system has asked for noon to 8:00 PM. Absentee ballots are available in the town clerk's office for those who will be away who, or will not be able to vote at the special time the polls are open. And then lastly, the last day to register vote to be eligible to vote for the state election on Tuesday, November 6th, is Wednesday, October 17th, at 8:00 PM. So just a note to folks that do want to participate in that election, and that one usually, the presidential election usually gets one of the best turnouts. And the last day to register vote on that is Wednesday, October 17th, 2012, at 8:00 PM. That concludes my comments on the manager's announcements, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Agenda Item Number Seven is our swearing-in and presentation segment of the meeting. And we do have quite a few presentations. I'd like to start the evening, if I could. I have a proclamation. Mr. Vassal, are you here? This is a very special anniversary for St. Nicholas Orthodox Albanian Church. And I'd like to read our proclamation, if I could. Whereas the Church of St. Nicholas was built in 1912 and has the distinction of being the first church in the world to be constructed by Orthodox Christians for the express purpose of worshiping God in the Albanian language, whereas in 1941, due to the growth of the Albanian community in Southbridge and surrounding area, the present structure was erected on the site of the original building on Morris Street. Now, therefore, the town of Southbridge recognizes and celebrates the 100th anniversary of the St. Nicholas Albanian Church on this 24th day of September in the year of 2012. And it says, "In witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and caused this seal to be affixed. Signed, Catherine Nicola, Council Chairwoman." 100 years.
I feel old. Madam Chair, Town Manager Christopher Clark, distinguished members of the council, ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of St. Nicholas Orthodox Church on Morris Street, 100 years old, I would like to thank you all for this citation proclamation. And on behalf of the parishioners, our pastor, Father John Daly, His Eminence Archbishop Nikon, by the way, resides in Southbridge, and on behalf of the delegation we've got here, back, back there, you can't see them, I guess, in the dark, we want to thank you very much. And we're very proud of our heritage. There are all ethnic groups, I'm sure, in this town, because that's what we're made up of here. We remember our parents and grandparents who came here and established the church and established the Albanian community, and were a big part of Southbridge's history through the years. And we want to remember them very well, because when they came here, just like other, again, other immigrants, they had little more than the claws on their back, especially from an impoverished country like Albania, which was one of the poorest countries in Europe at that time. So it's with great pride, gratefulness, and humbly accept this citation. Incidentally, Albania was under the yoke of the Ottoman Empire for 500 years. So it's a tribute to those people that kept their language, customs, and religion through that period of time. Coincidentally, we, 1912 was the year that Albania declared their independence, so it's 100 years of the Albanian independence in modern times, of course, because they existed much longer than that, but the new Albania, which was piecemeal. So I thank everybody, and God bless you all. God bless America.
Thank you, Mr. Vassal, and thank you for all of the hard work and participation that you've had in that church. I don't think I've ever, ever attended anything at St. Nicholas Church without seeing you there. Thank you. The next presentation is Espira. The presenter, it says here, is Luz Anida Espiro, President.
Madam Chair, Town Manager.
Madam Chair, Town Manager, and Counselor, thank you for allowing me to come here today. My name is Luz Anita Espino, and I'm just going to make a brief presentation about ASPIRA and what we've done since we founded in 2009. As you know, the ASPIRA of Massachusetts concentrates on advocating for the education and leadership development of its Latino youth and other youth within the District of Southbridge in Massachusetts. And basically, since 2009, I'll just give a little brief session of what we've done. I won't be long. In 2010, October, we had our first Saturday Academy, which concentrates on career awareness, college readiness, and SAT math tutoring, science tutoring, and English tutoring. At that time, we had four students. The outcome was that one senior enrolled at Quincy County Community College, one senior headed to military school, and two juniors remained at Southbridge High. In the fall of 2010, we started our youth club, which concentrates at Southbridge High, which concentrates on leadership development of its youth, community involvement, and advocating to help within the community to pay it forward. We had 23 students enrolled at that time, and we had two college visits. In March of 2011, we had two, another Saturday Academy, our third one, we had four students enrolled. One senior enrolled at QCC, one senior relocated to Dominican Republic and is attending College Day, and two juniors were at Southbridge High. We continued with the youth club in the winter, with college visits, and assisted in community events and field trips. And early this year, we acquired a $50,000 CDPG grant that has helped us hire a part-time program coordinator. She works about 20 to 25 hours a week, and she is in charge of the Saturday Academy and the youth club. That session had enrolled 11 students, one college visit, one senior college-bound, seven juniors, and four sophomores at Southbridge High School. In the spring, we continued with the youth club, with events in the community and fundraisers. Summer, we had a summer Saturday Academy, and this was attended by seven students. They had internships at the YMCA, curbside terrorists, Camp Foskett, and cops and kids, community service, and academics, field trips, and students, all at Southbridge High School. That was excluded, obviously, for the seniors. This fall, we started another Saturday Academy, this session would be number five for us. We have 12 students enrolled. We are concentrating on academics, youth summit, college visits, math and English classes through QCC. And we have been awarded, we have awarded over $4,000 in scholarships to graduating seniors from Southbridge High. The last, in 2012, were two $800 scholarships. One is attending Sacred Heart University, and the other one is attending Westfield State University. We continue to put together the Parent Plus Program, or the Apex Program, which is ASPIRA for Parents Educational Excellence, which concentrates on workshop for parents to basically teach them how to help their students achieve academic success, and involves a workshop that they have to graduate through, teaching them about how to sit with your child to help them study, do their homework, get involved in governance, not only in school, but within the community. And they, in turn, will graduate, and they will then pass it on and train more parents. We're also working with the PTA on that. We've had a community events fundraisers in 2010. We have the Fiesta de Reyes, attendance were about 300 people. Again, that was our main fundraiser the first year. In October 2010, we had a Hispanic Heritage Month celebration, celebrating our cultural education, and we had about 35 attendance, because it was just for networking, and it was held at the library. January of 11, we had another Fiesta de Reyes, again, 300 people attended. In September of 2011, we had our first Hispanic Heritage Month celebration, actually recognizing sponsors from the community that had helped us through the year. It was very successful. We had it at the Hotel and Conference Center, we had about 175 attendees, and that generated about $10,000 worth of fundraising. In January, we had our other Fiesta de Reyes, again, fundraising, that generated about $6,000 in revenue for us. And in September of this year, we just had a Hispanic Heritage Month celebration, again, awarding awards to those sponsors and stakeholders and manufacturers that had helped us throughout the years, which included Southbridge Savings Bank, Mr. Pettenelli, Harrington Healthcare Systems, the Southbridge Cultural Council, who has been very generous with us, and Mr. Nutley from the high school, which has been videotaping and helping us promote ASPIRA, and they get a nice award. So I just brought this one to pass around. I was hoping, I know that I saw Denise in last year's celebration of this at the DOD. Yeah. But we, it was very successful this year. I sent it around, and we're planning for our Fiesta de Reyes again on January 5th of 2003. So we're still working on the CDPG grant, we're making strides, and we're hoping that we can still continue to connect with the school department. We actually did meet with Ms. Peralta, I should say, to get the groups going at the high school, and hopefully recruit more children, or more students. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Counselor McCucci? Excuse me, Madam Chair. Through you, what is the age group that you service?
We're concentrating currently at the high school, 9 to 12. We started with 11 and 12, but now we're expanding it to 9 to 12. The parent group is for all levels of, from K through 12. Once we get more grants and we can continue to grow, we're going to be expanding the tutoring services to the middle school also. I've know, we did already put together an advisory council, which meets quarterly, and they've been helping us get together to put a campaign, and it includes various members of the community, and Senator Moore, and Representative Duran, and very other employees. But I wanted to say also that we also fixed our website, so if you have an opportunity, it's an awesome website, it's updated, it has everything that we are able to do, we're still under construction, but it's ASPIRA, A-S-P-I-R-A-M-A dot org. There's a video on school trips, college trips that the kids took, and it's generating a lot of attention, so we're looking forward to working collaboratively with the school department and the town, hopefully. We do need office space, hopefully in kind. I always plug for that.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next presenter is Charlene Perkins Cutler for the Last Green Valley.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, council members, Mr. Clark. I recently had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Clark and fill him in on some of the activities of the National Heritage Corridor, and he reminded me that the council might be interested in the program that we launch every October, which we call Walktober. This is a free program that's available to anyone from within the National Heritage Corridor, or visitors, and it's in its 22nd year. The idea was, we were working to become a National Heritage Corridor, and he thought, how can we build support for that? Well, the best thing was to get people outside to see the resources we have, the historical elements, our natural resources, the beautiful rivers, streams, forests that we have here in the National Heritage Corridor. And so we began this program of free guided walks. So they are led by someone who has some expertise in a particular field or endeavor, and people get a chance sometimes to visit places that they normally wouldn't get to go to, sort of a behind-the-scenes tour. Well, that was the idea, and we started 22 years ago. We had 25 events. People said, oh, that's just too much, it's spread around too much, people won't come. And we had more than 100 people on each of those events. So it's carried on since then. Now we have about 25,000 people who do this every October. In addition to walks, we have more rigorous hikes, we have paddles on rivers and streams and lakes, we have bike rides. This year, for the first time, we'll have several horse trail rides. You have to bring your own horse, but still free guided experience. And they're throughout the 35 towns in the Last Green Valley National Heritage Corridor, which is 1,086 square miles here in south-central Massachusetts and northeastern Connecticut. I see you have your plaque proudly displayed here in the council chamber, the Quinnabog and Shittucket Rivers Valley National Heritage Corridor. My meeting with Mr. Clark was about an endeavor that we have to formally change that name to the Last Green Valley National Heritage Corridor, because no one ever remembers or uses the other name. We think that the Last Green Valley is not only easier to remember, but is truly descriptive of what we are, and is our hope that everyone wants to see the last of something, and everyone wants to save the last of something. So we hope that works out for us. In addition to the 129 different opportunities you will have during the month of Walktober to get outside and enjoy the great resources here in our beautiful, beautiful region, we have a list of events that are going on at a number of our nonprofits, at our farms, all great free fun, and there are walks especially for children, for families, somewhere you can bring your dog. There's a very clear guide that will tell you if it's a very moderate and long hike, or if it's, you know, more of a leisurely stroll, way to get out and enjoy the fall colors and get a little bit of exercise. So I've brought copies for you this evening. I have a box of them that I'll leave here, so that you can distribute them here in town. And I really encourage everyone to pass them out to their friends, get people outside. There's a wonderful walk here in Southbridge at the Claire Burt's Sanctuary, down on 169. In fact, I think it's the very last walk of the, it is, it's on Halloween, the very last walk of the program. I also would like to encourage Southbridge, its nonprofits, maybe some of your own town committees, to think about other walks or experiences that you would like to hold next year, because we start planning for this in January again. And it's a wonderful way to show things that you've been working on, to talk about a particular neighborhood and its evolution. It would be great to have St. Nicholas's church do a special walk. I think that would be very, very interesting, and these are the kinds of things that people really look forward to this time of year. Doesn't cost anything to promote it, and it doesn't cost anything to attend. So thank you very much. Anyone have any questions for me?
Counselor, the walks that you suggest we promote, does it have to be part of nature, or can it be of the community and of itself?
Oh, no, it can definitely-
You know, so the historical buildings and that type of a thing?
Absolutely.
Because we have a route laid out that was done a few years ago, that would be nice to actually have somebody, we have it already mapped out and the buildings identified, and it'd be great to have somebody who actually would walk with people and-
People love this kind of stuff, they really do.
Super.
They enjoy special tours of, perhaps it's a property that's being redeveloped, like an old mill, and it's being turned into something else, and people get a tour around, and they learn about its history, but they learn about its reuse. Doesn't have to be just outside in nature. People love all of the farm tours. We have one walk in here, it's called Bison or Buffalo. It has been held for 22 years, and every year, 250 people show up for this walk. Of course, I think they give you free barley and bison stew this year or something, they're always feeding people when they come, but it's, and really, where do you get to get close to a buffalo? They're amazing creatures, they're quite scary, actually, but they're really amazing, and the kids get a big kick out of it. So there's plenty of room for all sorts of activities.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.[1412.52][1412.52](APPLAUSE). Thank you. Oops. That's okay. It happens all the time. Thank you.
It's not the bottle of water, that's good.
No, thanks, not a problem. This is good.
That would be so cool to do the walk that we did. I think that's a really great idea. Excellent, you're right.
Well, thank you very much, and we're going to move on to the last of the presentations. Did you have something you wanted to add?
I just want to do an overview on this.
Okay. Mr. Clark's going to do an overview of the presentation itself. It's the education enforcement of trash recycling.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, at the last meeting, I had a couple of questions that were asked to me, and I wanted to make sure that I was somewhat, as always, I try to be very responsive to the wishes of the council. Just in terms of two things that I'd like to accomplish here while Jim gets set up, is that we are going to do a presentation. Normally, we have the departments come in and do a presentation. This one, we decided to do specifically on the education and enforcement of the trash program. This evening, we have Mr. Moore and the Health Director is here, Kim Grant is the recycling coordinator, Eric Jacobson from Green Brown Consulting, Chief Sherrett is here on behalf of the Police Department, and we do have two folks that are municipal hearing officers here also. Just to provide kind of a simple overview, these are the folks that are here that actually operate the program on behalf of the town. I would like to just state that, you know, this is a program that was born of a policy decision made by the council that administration attempted to put into place, and I think we've had some fairly good results overall in terms of the overall recycling rate. However, you know, there's nothing, nothing is perfect in life, and I'm sure that we've made mistakes, and we will continue to try to improve how we do it. Just the quick overview of the program. In September, October, we really went out and advertised, I think we sent mailers to every residence in the town of Southbridge. We had newspaper articles, ads put in to let people know. In February, through mostly concerns that I had received directly from members of the council, they were concerned that we still had a lot of people that weren't following the rules and weren't complying with the education program. I think we had about 50 observations a day for people not complying with the program. So the council's concerns, I think, were very telling. And in February, I don't remember the exact date, but I had a conversation with the Police Department and asked them to please enhance the enforcement, and get out and do a lot of the enforcement work, which they did, and that moved the 50 observations a day down to two. So we had a dramatic decrease in that. From that period of time, from February to May, there were quite a few citations that were issued, and one of the things that the Green Brown Consulting was doing for us throughout this was to track the program for us, to actually see how we were doing, to see how our program operates. So in May, we did what I call refined enforcement, in which only folks that were reported to the Police Department that had received several points of contact from the town in terms of letters of education, were then given to the Police Department to then follow up and enforce. And since that's happened, that has dramatically reduced the number of fines that we have issued. But I think that we still have a good, valid program that we will continue to actively enforce. The two elements that I just wanted to mention also is, Mr. Moore has brought an independent kind of third-party out this evening. Actually, I forget, because the gentleman's name was a little bit difficult, so I didn't write it down, or I didn't bring my notes with me. But we have a kind of a third-party independent observations of how our curbside collection program is going. So that also is going to be worked into the presentation. This presentation is probably going to take about 10 or 15 minutes, just to get the information out there in better detail. And then obviously, I really do want to be responsive to the council, so if there's any questions, I think we have everybody here that is a decision-maker in regards to how this process worked. So I would encourage you to ask your questions. And then lastly, on the Green Brown Consulting, I was asked about specific details of an agreement, and I didn't have the agreement in front of me, I've remedied that. The Green Brown Consulting contract was actually entered into in January of 2012 for one year. So we do, even though it goes through two fiscal years, we still have an obligation to fund that contract, because a one-year contract by law, if you go into a one-year contract, even though you go through multiple fiscal years, there's still an obligation. The other part to that, though, is it does not have a renewal, so it is one-time, and if we want to renew, we would have to re-advertise and rebid the work. So I would ask the council, and it's not on the agenda tonight, I'll ask to have it on the agenda for the next one, that we just provide the funding to at least bring us up through January 1st of 2013. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Moore to walk through in more detail, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I'll introduce Kim Grant, she's the, will be doing the education piece, that's what her concentration was. She's interacting with all the residents and the town council members. Then it'll be Green Brown for the, kind of the enforcement component. And then lastly, it'll be Tom Yserian from Commonwealth. So I'll turn it over to Kim.
Thank you, Jim. Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Clark, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen. So basically, I've been asked to give a quick overview of the education piece for this new program. And also, I was asked to request that you please hold your questions to the end of all our presentations. I'll thank you in advance for that. So as Mr. Clark had mentioned, we started off by doing the advertisements in both the local papers, the Telegram and Gazette, and the Southbridge Evening News. Those ads ran from September through November 2011. And also, around the same time, we had been placing green stickers, educational stickers in English and Spanish on items that were at the curb, that should not have been at the curb, that is ongoing. Also, we created a tri-fold brochure explaining all elements of the trash and recycling program, again, in English and Spanish, that is ongoing. That's available on the website, ThinkReduce.com, also in the Health Department. And if people request them, we mail them to them. And whenever I do events, I have them. Then we had four signs placed throughout town, and they were double-sided. We had educational door hangers that were specifically designed for tenants and multifamilies. Again, those are in English and Spanish, and those are ongoing. We had an educational workshop at the library, and this is in October. We had 70 adults attend. We also mailed approximately 3,800 postcards to property owners, anyone who had property in Southbridge, again, explaining the program. We had videos, one for bulk, one for recycling, one for trash. Again, those are in English and Spanish. Those play continuously on the access channel. They're also on ThinkReduce.com. Hundreds of phone calls were taken in person, conversations as well. Again, that's ongoing. Then, of course, we have ThinkReduce.com, which is updated regularly. And in December, another educational workshop was held for adults. We had 12 attend. In February, we created warning tags for the Police Department to distribute. Those are, again, in English and Spanish. And in July, we started a Facebook page for Think Reduce Beautify Southbridge, which can have ongoing dialogue. And then, we have some blank pages. And this just kind of shows you a quick overview of the trash and recycling program. We have kind of the new versus the old. So this is going back for about a year now, and then the previous year, red being the previous year, blue being the most recent year. This is by month. And as you can see, the trash tonnages, which is to the left, MSW, they were around... What is that? Anyway, between like 400 and 500 tons per month. Whereas with the new program, you can see it's averaging more between 300 and 400. So there's been roughly a 20% decrease. And then, recycling also, again, the blue line being the new program and the red line being the old. So with the recycling... The recycling has gone about 30% now, where the monthly tonnage is averaging around 100. Whereas before, it was probably closer to like 80, 90. And then, this chart just shows from when we started last October. The top line represents weekly trash pickup. It's in tonnages. So as you can see, we're kind of leveling off to be in the around 80 tons a week. And our lowest so far has been 6895. And then, recycling, again, is bi-weekly. So what you're seeing there is the tonnages, and they're consistently in the 50s. And our highest weekly rate so far has been 28%. These are really great numbers. Just some additional programs. We have the Community Gardens on Cross Street. And on Worcester Street, we do rain barrel and rotating compost distribution days. We actually have another one coming up, October 11th. You can order by October 8th. There's a summer children's education series that I did at Brookside. I've conducted numerous educational workshops at the library. I've been asked to speak at civic and professional organizations throughout town. I also do tabling at public events. We have the Earth Day event and community cleanups. And some upcoming programs would be more recycling trash videos with cable access. And we do have new recycling barrels to downtown area, which we're working with a local vendor to install those. That's the presentation I have. Thank you.
Do you want to hold off on questions now? Do questions now or later? Later? Okay.
Madam Chair, Mr. Clark, council members, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Eric Jacobson. I'm with Green Brown Consulting. I've been handling the enforcement at the curb, along with education at the curb. And I'd like to take and discuss what I've been doing. I'd like to start out with what some of the violations are that can be seen. We can have no trash, loose bags, inappropriate trash containers. You'd have like blue barrels, that sort of thing. Recycling found in trash, inappropriate waste set out, bulk items not registered, hazards, waste, and trash in recycling. Recycling required is required to be loose, not in bags. Inappropriate use of recycling toters, trash.
Just kind of excuse me one minute. I just want to get on the presentation.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah, that's okay. Okay. Trash spillage, banned items found, being like TVs, that sort of thing. Anything out after, on or before 24-hour pickup window being trash, recycling, or bulk, and illegally dumped items. The progression of enforcement. I started back in October of 2011, between 2011 and October 2011, February 2012. We were only doing education, doing pamphlets, green tags, door tags, letting people know about the program. Bulk violations at the time were being sent to the Southbridge Police for citations. Violations averaged per day were between 30 and 50. Between February and the end of April, we were continuing with the education aspect. The police started issuing citations, and bulk violations were sent to the Southbridge Police for citation at that time, too. Bulk violations, they started to drop during this period, and violations per day started to drop as well. May to July, we focused more on education. During this time, we were trying to re-educate the public on the proper procedures of solid waste and recycling at the curb. Bulk violations were almost non-existent, and violations per day continued to drop at that point as well. July till present, education is still continuing at the curb. We enacted a three-strikes rule. Basically, after an attempt of three times of education violations, we make a recommendation to the Southbridge Police Department by citation of 21D. And then, first, usually first and second attempts at education usually works, and the violations stop. And the violations have dropped to two to six per day. Future outlook, we continue with the... We'd like to continue with the efforts spoken about this evening. And we want to work on increasing awareness and recycling in Southbridge is mandatory through reminder letters and literatures, brochures, door tags. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tom Yerancian, and I'm with Commonwealth Resource Management. I'm a principal and one of the founders. We've been in business since 1991. We're a Boston-based consulting and development firm that's focused on solid waste management issues for municipalities. Our professional focus is materials and waste management, resource recovery and recycling, renewable energy, and distributed power generation. And our activities for municipalities is focused on New England, primarily Massachusetts. And we've assisted many municipalities in procuring facilities and services, assessing the programs, and doing technical, economic, and environmental analyses on their behalf as well as permitting. So what were we asked to do? We're doing a... We were asked to do a preliminary review of the town recycling program. And what does that involve? We were asked to review the elements of the program, quantify the results, the current results, compare those results with comparable peer communities, and given the results, look for areas that you may be able to improve, that you might want to consider. And overall, given those results and comparatives, grade the program. And then, have an opportunity to explore long-term objectives and concerns for your recycling program. So the first thing is, and I apologize if this is common knowledge, but there are five program components that you have in Southbridge. First, solid waste. You have weekly curbside collection to a majority of the households, approximately 6,200 out of the 7,200 households that you serve using household containers not to exceed 50 pounds. It's limited to residential dwellings, up to six units per dwelling. That captures about 86% of the residents in the town. Under your operating agreement, that means you have no collection or disposal costs under your operating agreement for the residents and the town. The second program element is recycling. So you have bi-weekly curbside collection of 96-gallon containers, containers that were distributed to the households through the town. Bi-weekly is once every two weeks. Again, it's limited to the same residents that the trash pickup is. And again, under your operating agreement, the town and the residents have no collection or processing costs for recyclables. The third program element is bulky and C and D waste. You have once-per-week, on Tuesdays, pickup of bulky and C and D waste that residents can go to your town website, register, and schedule that pickup. Pickups are limited to a two-cubic-yard volume. That volume, just for context, is about a large sofa. Again, under your operating contract, that once-per-week curbside pickup does not cost the town or the residents any money. The fourth program element is yard waste. You have once-per-week curbside collection 12 weeks out of the year. That's six weeks in the fall, six weeks in the spring. You have another opportunity... Residents have another opportunity through the drop-off center that is at the DPW, April through December. The third avenue for yard waste is residential drop-off during the four quarterly household hazardous waste collection days. There is no limit to the quantity of yard waste residents can dispose in any of these programs. And again, under your operating agreement with Casella, there's no cost to the town or residents for collection, processing, and use or disposal of yard waste. The fifth and final element of your program is household hazardous waste, which you have four events per day quarterly where residents can drop off their household hazardous waste at no cost. There are some items that do have fees associated with them, for instance, TVs and monitors. So how do these program... How do these... So what are the reasons for residents to recycle? Well, number one, it's the law. It's in your town bylaw. They're mandated to recycle. And that's consistent with other municipalities, and it's consistent with state regulations and the laws, the promulgating laws. Second is, it... The town of Southbridge is providing people the opportunity to recycle. And the single-stream recycling that you have, the opportunities through yard waste, it makes the residents... It makes it very easy for residents to participate. These opportunities are also reminded through the education and enforcement program. The education through the town staff, Kim, you know, laid out all the elements of that education program. And Eric went through the enforcement elements. The enforcement elements were a major new thing as part of this thing last year. And the reminders are three warnings, and the fourth warning becomes a fine. The fourth reason to recycle is really town reputation. It gives residents that recycle, it gives them some ownership of recycling. It's ownership of the town. It's a pride thing, and it's an important part of a reason to recycle. The long-term, recycling is good for the town. You know, we went through all the programs, and, you know, under your operating agreement, there is no cost for many of the services. That's not going to last forever. So it's important to put together a program that years from now, when the operating agreement is in existence, you have a low-cost, dependable, mature program that minimizes the town's cost long-term. So how does this... How does this... The performance of the program stack up over the last couple of years? So you move from one program to educate and enforcement, which started October 2001. So what I'm showing here, we looked at four waste streams, four components, and current year tonnages versus the prior year. And the last column is the change in the quantity of tons from the current year to the prior year. And as you can see here, you've had a decrease in trash of 20%, which is very consistent with what the state policy is trying to move to. Zero waste, master planning under the state of Massachusetts wants communities to move from 2010 to 2020 to reduce their waste by 20... To 30%, by 30%. You're already, in the first two years, a long way along that path. Recyclables, those have increased by 30%. Bulky waste and yard waste, those are up both 50%. Some of this trash, you know, ends up in... Well, it's not trash ones, it's in recyclables, but some recyclables move from trash to recyclables. Some yard waste moves from trash to yard waste. And residents also may be reducing the quantities of trash. So year over year, these are very, very impressive results. So how does your program stack up against other communities similar to yourselves, your peer groups? So the first column is Southbridge, and it's showing your recycling rate, recyclables per household served in tons, and trash per household served in tons. There are three groups. Residents with no... Communities that have programs that don't limit trash, okay? And those are communities that I picked out, where Wilmington, Newburyport, Rockland, and Auburn. Those are communities that are about the same household size as Southbridge and have single-stream programs. The second group are communities where the residents are limited in terms of how much trash they can throw out through the containers that they're provided. And if they want to exceed those trash limits, they actually pay a fee for an extra container or additional cost for bags. And the last are towns with pay-as-you-throw programs. And about a third of the municipalities in Massachusetts now have pay-as-you-throw programs, and that's kind of the holy grail for recycling. And as you can see, you move from left to right, you know, the programs with no limits on trash, you get recycling rates of 13 to 24%. Those with recycling limits on trash, 27 to 34%, and pay-as-you-throw programs, 33 to 36%. So there's an incremental benefit as you move over in communities. So there's an incremental benefit as you, you move over in, in, in communities. You would have thought that South Bridge, with no limits on trash, would fall in the first category of 13 to 24%. You're right, you're right now, in your last few months, are up to 28% recycling rate. So you actually fall in the second group, which means that your, your recycling rates are really off the charts in terms of your peer communities. So grading the overall program, I'm giving, I'm giving it a B+ to A-, and I have four areas that this is based on. Number one, participation rate. How many of the households in this community do you serve? 86% of the households? And on a state average for single-stream programs, it's about 85%. So you're, you're, you're tracking where the average is in the state for participation. So it's, it's, it's comparable to your peer communities. Is there room for improvement? Yeah, I mean, 100% would be an A+. But it's, it's pretty good, 86% of all residents served. Second area is opportunities to recycle. You know, you have bi-weekly curbside recycle, which is really consistent with most of the other communities. There are very few communities that have more frequent curbside recycling. You're using the largest tote that you can possibly have on a curb and collect on curbside, a 96-gallon tote. But you, you don't have a drop-off opportunity other than for yard waste. So there is some room for improvement, but you're doing, in terms of opportunities, giving the residents to recycle very, very well. Your recycling rate, again, B+. The, the rate compares to some of the best programs without going to pay-as-you-throw. Again, pay-as-you-throw, across the board, has the highest recycling rates. But falling short of going to such a program, you're doing the best of the programs that are out there. Some of the improvements that you've already made in the last couple of years, I'm giving an A. The education enforcement program that's been here for a year, you saw, has some very clear and compelling results in all categories. And all those categories work together. It's not, you just, you can't just look at recycling rate alone. It's, it's how much trash is being reduced, how much diversion of yard waste and bulky items are getting, are people reducing waste? The other thing that I really like in, in both the education enforcement program that you have is a website with a lot of feedback and a lot of data gathering. So, so the health department is, is getting metrics for monitoring and tracking, which is important to improve a program. You know where you are. You also have an operating contract with a company that you, you, you should want to have a firm grasp on numbers. And that's what, that, that's what you're getting under that program. So areas for improvements, depends on your objectives. I'm assuming that if one of your objectives is to increase recycling to higher levels, there are a couple areas you want, you, you might want to consider that would likely increase your recycling rates. Moving bi-weekly to weekly curbside collection gives more opportunity for residents to, to recycle and remember to recycle, as opposed to looking at a, you know, is it the right week? Drop-off center, another avenue for residents to, to participate in recycling. You know, those are all incremental costs, so you'd have to assess whether it's really worth the likely increase in recycling, given the amount of dollars you'd have to spend to put those things in place. Last is impose limits on no, no-cost trash and keep recycling at no cost. So this is the pay-as-you-throw hybrids. You know, you could limit, you could put a, a, a container out there at no cost, but limit the trash to that container, and if you go over that limit, residents would pay. And that's a real incentive that's worked in other communities. And again, pay-as-you-throw is another, is the other issue which really does up recycling rates and lower trash rates, because it puts, it puts the control, well, it puts the fees and the cost directly on the people that are, the residents, that are putting out recyclables So what are the short and long-term objectives and concerns? I mean, this is really open for, for your consideration in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, you know, we tried to give you a lot of information as quick as possible. We know we, if I ran over our time, we apologize for that. But for us, and for me personally, I've been working really hard. I've been here over three years now. When I was originally hired, I was asked to fix the recycling rates. And I graciously accepted, not knowing what the details of that were. And it's been very difficult for us at the health department for many reasons. Basically, from concerned citizens and wondering about the relationship we have with Casella. We're in a very unique position, where the town owns an asset known as the landfill. With that asset comes responsibilities. And we, we're trying to, you know, put together the best opportunity we can for the residents. You know, that's with, with the extension agreement. I was not here when that was written and implemented. I'm trying my best to implement it, and there's, and it, and it takes a lot of turns. I work closely with the town manager to do that and to do the best that we can do for the community. You know, my 22 years of experience, I've worked in six different towns, I've usually have controlled the solid waste program for that community. I, I think it's come a long way. I, I do think there's room for improvement. I, I'm sure that there's plenty of people, residents, counselors, even businesses that would like to offer us advice on what, what their take on it. And so, I mean, I think that's where we see the program going in the future. So with that, I'd just like to open up the questions.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. Do I have any people out here who want, any questions? I think you start with Councilor Markucci.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to the people that made the presentation. I'm excited. We made the honor roll, according to you. That, that's great. Jim, I think your, your whole department does a fantastic job, and the numbers don't lie. It, it's very impressive since we started this program and the numbers and where we're My concern, and the reason why I wanted a, a presentation, another presentation, if you will, just from the few complaints. I mean, the numbers are there, it's fantastic, and I think any program that people aren't used to, you're going to be met with resistance. And I think your response through the department has been very positive. The educational programs that you see on the local access channel to what you're doing and knocking on the doors, we as citizens have to take some responsibility ourselves. And it is as simple as taking your trash or your recyclables, putting them out at the front of your driveway, and that's it. And I don't, I don't see what the big problem is for us as residents. You know, the three-strike rule? If you've got to knock on someone's door three times to remind them that, listen, you know, we've spoken to you once, been here twice, now it's a third time. I think it's something positive now that the police department is involved in conjunction with your department. What I want to know is, I live in House A, Councilor Regis lives in House B. I'm the non-compliant one. So you, you knock on my door, you're not satisfied. Come back a month or two months later. Demographically, where are you in conjunction? It would probably be more with Eric. You have a way of going through town, correct? Okay. If you're back at my home two or three times, you issued the citation, now it's brought to the town hall for a hearing, correct? Is that how that works? I think that's where the complaints are, because what's happening to me and the person that lives on the side.
I buy it at your house three times.
Yeah.
I, I then send it to the police department. The recommendations that have gone out so far, there's been between, I think, five and seven for that, for just, and they're habitual offenders. If you've had a trash bag at the curb and you put one out once every couple of months or something like that, you know, I, I do note it, but I'm not going to, and I might send a letter to you after a couple of times, but I won't send you to the police department. I've asked to be kind of ligh-handed with that, not to come down with a hammer on people.
Sure, understandable. So it goes to the police department, they issue the citation, then it becomes, comes to the hearing officer in town, correct?
Yes.
And then the hearing officer determines whether that fine is going to be imposed?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And they go off of, like, the police department goes off of evidence that I supply.
In that circumstance, the fine has been issued. If there's a valid reason that that fine wasn't legitimate, then you ask for a hearing, and then it's the responsibilities of the hearing officers, both of which who went to training to, to understand how to do an adjudicatory hearing, conducts a hearing to try to get to the truth, if you would, of, of the matter. And then they've been given authority in writing that they have full discretion. So in a case in which perhaps it was Councilor Regis' material on your property, and you can prove that, you know, through the investigation, then that fine could be waived, and they have authority to do that. So it is a human process. Everything we do is a human process, and the, the system does have those checks and balances in it to try to catch it.
I think it's fantastic. Do you have a lot of repeat offenders? People that just?
We did in the beginning. It's, it's much better than what it was. And some of the repeat offenders that we've had, you know, we're working with trying to get this, trying to get it solved.
Are they more from single-family or multi-family?
A lot of them are, it's multi-family. There's not a lot of single-family residents that are habitual offenders.
Okay. And if I could, could I ask the chief a question? So chief, I'm that repeat offender now. So an officer is going to come to my house, issue the citation.
Yes.
Now, is that officer part of the hearing process? Or no, you're?
Yes. Excuse me, good evening. And that's, that's really our, our piece of this, in that we are the eyes on the street that can bring that information in, testify to it, to the hearing officer, and present that to them.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilor Clements, and then Councilor Regis.
Thank you. To Mr., is it Aranci?
Yes.
Great. I wasn't sure I'd heard you correctly. I was just curious, your company, Commonwealth Resource Management, you do, do you do implementation, establishing programs, and evaluating programs, existing programs, such as what you just did here for us? Just curious about, and could, some of the communities that you work in, perhaps, or you've worked with?
130 communities in Maine that use the PERC facility, Waste-to-Energy Facility. So we work for, it's called the MRC, which is a, a group of those communities. So we, we've given them, you know, every community is a little different, but we, we've given them a lot of advice over the years. They've been with us 21 years. That's, you know, that's our largest municipal grouping. We've worked at, you know, a number of municipalities within Massachusetts, all sizes. You know, City in New Bedford, you know, we helped them with, with rooting or privatizing collection versus, you know, looking at privatizing versus public. You know, over the years, recycling has, recycling specifically, when we started in this business, there was, I mean, even predates 91, I got into this business in 85, and we were focused on helping municipalities privatize waste-to-energy facilities. And that, at that point, was, resource recovery was actually thought of as recycling. There was no such thing as recycling. So, you know, over the last 25 years, the solid waste management, you know, 25 years ago, I wouldn't be talking about a programmatic approach to solid waste management. That's what we've been doing really for the last, you know, 20 years. And 20 years ago was the beginning of that programmatic discussion. And, and so we've helped municipalities over the years formulate those programs and implement them. We've worked for private developers that were mandated by law when they got their permits, whether they have a landfill or a, a waste-to-energy facility, to have, to, to implement programs with their host communities. So we've been on both, both sides of the fence. I would say recycling, over the years, we're in a very mature place, a very mature marketplace. You, you look at the, the service providers that provide these services, they, you know, they'll go to a community and say, you can have X, Y, and Z. And, and these programs are done in, you know, 100 of your other communities. So, so we've, we've done a lot of consulting throughout the years as this industry has, has gone from infancy to maturity.
Well, you pointed out that we have a great resource, but it's a finite resource, and the more trash you put in, the quicker your resource will disappear. So obviously, recycling and having other ways to rid, rid ourselves of the MSW, sorting, sorting that MSW to recycle is such as the way to go. So I thank you for your information this evening. I was just curious what, what other part, parts of the community or the state or this area that you participated in. So, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Councilor Regis?
Madam Chair, if I could just take Councilor Markucci's scenario a couple steps further, because watching this process evolve, I have in my head what I think happens, and I just want to confirm that that's the case, or maybe it's not. So once someone has been warned three times, they are then issued a citation, 21D. For those individuals who do get that 21D violation notice, what do the majority of those individuals do? Do they request a hearing and attend a hearing? Or do they ignore the citation? And how many of those violations have gone up to the court and are sitting there now?
Okay, the actual nuts and bolts of it is Mr. Jacobson literally emails me a picture of the violation, all the pertinent information. We then assign an officer to look at that. We, we literally have only had five of these since the beginning of July. So we're really just starting that process. And I'm not sure if all have paid at this point, or if in fact they've come to the hearing. No, the hearing officers are saying no at this point. It's really, it's a work in progress. It's so new doing that. But we've literally gone from dozens and dozens a day down to five in that few-month period.
Okay, so this is, I guess, my question, and Mr. Clark, if I could.
If I could. You know, there, there was a little bit of a change in the program from February to May. So when the police went out and enforced in May, they just, from February to May, they found a violation and they issued a ticket. So there were several people that didn't get that three-strikes rule applied to them. So we're, we're talking about two different animals. What Sergeant Dinghy had told me, Carlos Dinghy was the person that's responsible for enforcement on the police end, is that every time they went to Dudley District Court, Dudley District Court upheld the town's position. They may have reduced the fine slightly if they thought it was warranted, but basically they upheld the town that it was a true violation. So I know that he is sending them over there, and because Dudley knows, Dudley District Court knows that we are being diligent, giving people several opportunities to do the right thing, that that's helping us to literally make our case in front of the judges. So someone that doesn't comply, and it's going to court, and the court officer brings it and actually files it at Dudley District Court, I would say, because I, I do have a pet peeve where I come into work every day and there's a violation, there are one-offs that are very, very difficult to get to. And we have one property in which the person is deceased, the property is in an estate, and we could probably and we could probably find them every single day. But there's just no, at this moment, competent ownership to respond and work with us to help that. So in a community that has 6,000 units, in a community that has 60% of the housing stock as rental property, which I just found that out the other day at CMR PC, and with such a transient nature, the fact that we have as few problems as we do, I think is just testament that, you know, these guys are, these guys and gals are doing a good job of trying to enforce.
And I agree. And that's why, that's my question, is I don't really see these, and we are talking two different animals. I'm talking about the three strikes, then you get the violation. I don't see these people paying. I don't see them requesting a hearing. I see it going to Dudley District Court. I don't even see them showing up. And you know what? I don't care. I don't. Because those are the people that no matter what we do, what hoops we jump through, if we do backflips, whatever we do, we're not going to get through to them. We're not.
Well, Mr. Clark is accurate on that. The court has been very good in helping us to make sure this enforcement goes forward. That's the ones prior. The newer session, we're just getting into that link now.
Thank you. Thank you.
Does anybody else? Counselor McDonald?
The one thing that I noticed that I was glad to see was the fact that we fall in the 28 or 26% range, which indicates, you know, that's typically a level that pay-as-you-throw goes into. And some citizens had made the case before, and it had been my analysis from what I seen, that I thought we were pretty good in a community where 60% are rental properties. Prior to this, that we were doing really good with, residents were doing really good in taking that initiative. And I commend the Health Department on the work they're doing. And I think it's just important to concentrate on. I mean, to me, this makes the case that we really didn't need a program like Smart Card, because our citizens are willing to do this. And the thing is that making sure that we keep our commitment to the citizenry who basically see this landfill and the asset as something for them to use as well, not to be penalized with. So I think you're making strides in that manner, and I just appreciate it. And thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Counselor Pellican?
Thank you, Madam Chair. After going through Mr. Aranci's presentation, there's lots of great information there. His last slide, which is still up, it's just, it's really thought-provoking for me, and this is something I'm interested in doing, definitely not this evening. But what are the short and long terms, term objectives as a community? And what concerns do we still have after implementing this program over the last year? In terms of our curbside pickup here in town, I was really interested in seeing the different kinds of curbside pickup programs and what recycling rates, on average, each one generates. And I know that Mr. Moore, and you see your job is trying to make Southbridge's recycling rate as high as possible, and I totally commend that. But at the same time, I know that our landfill extension agreement is up for a look back, and we've hired a legal person to help us with that. And I know that curbside pickup is a part of that contract. So I'd be interested in finding out if there's any sort of plan to have some sort of discussion within the community amongst stakeholders to see what we'd really like to see in terms of a pickup program for Southbridge Trash and Recycling.
Just Madam Chair, I'll start with, I'll start with our response to that. I think one of the things that I want to make sure we don't do is kind of backslide. And one of the things that was a great concern to me is the 60% transient. And transient sounds bad, but it's just a word that people come and go when they live in a rental property. So it's not good or bad, but it's something that we have to be sensitive to. I think the first phase is that we have to make sure we sustain the levels that we have. And then, actually, Mr. Moore and I had this discussion in my office this afternoon that we want to try to lay out what are the next logical steps? How do we get past that 28% boundary and try to go even higher? There are going to be some significant obstacles to that. I think there are opportunities for us to accomplish. But I think we're going to have to take some time to kind of see what those options are, and then bring those back in the next two to three months to lay them out to the council. One that I think is kind of low-hanging fruit is the concept of doing weekly recycling. I think that there is a lot of confusion. I think there's a lot of misunderstanding in the community, and to simplify that, I think, goes a long way. You know, that, every action we take has a reaction. And so it has to be thought out, how we want to present that and how we want to make those changes. But it's things like that that I think that we have kind of in mind for what we want to try to pursue. Another one that I think may come is to have folks be able to come up instead of on a quarterly basis, maybe have folks come up on a Saturday and have the landfill open to Saturday to try to help with the bulk issue and some of the other issues. So I think if people had that outlet where they have the ability to come up to the landfill and dump their material, to kind of, again, encourage that. Just a few quick thoughts, and we will definitely try to formulate that into more of a plan for the council to consider as we've done throughout. But I would ask that, you know, the material that we bring back at the next meeting is, you know, at least let us continue to do the good work that we've been able to do, really in implementing the council's wishes. And, you know, it makes me feel good that, you know, it was a council initiative that we've been able to put forward, and it's working, and it's working really well. And we'd like to make sure we sustain that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Before anybody else speaks, I want to say one thing while we have your attention. This Saturday, the 29th, I've mentioned it before, but I mentioned it a few weeks ago, is Household Hazardous Waste Day. So if you have bulk items, you know the rules. But it is this Saturday, September 29th. Moving right along, I have other counselors with questions. Counselor Landman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, thank you for this presentation. Very informative and helpful. In our weekly packets that we get, I do like to read all the reports and look it over. And, you know, you have it broken down into MSW bulk and recycling. And I notice in certain areas, you know, because we have the pickup every day, different section, the recycling rate in a few areas are lower than others. Is there a reason behind that? Or are you dissecting it a little more, looking a little deeper into why is that? Or is it just the demographics in that area?
Through, Madam Chair, what we do is when we started to collect the data over a year ago, I've been discussing with Chris, the town manager, that we start to look at how would we, you know, perfect our, what they call target market. So that's why we started tracking it by route, to be able to see where we need to concentrate our efforts, to see who needs the most help. I mean, so that's why we break it apart like that. What we've noticed is the multi-families, you know, just base fact that they seem like they need the most help. I haven't dissected it as far as, is it a language barrier? Is it an education level? Is it, "I don't care" attitude because I don't own something? We haven't dissected the information that far at this point. But the reason why we started to dissect the information is to, you know, be more effective. Don't just throw a bunch of money against the wall, but know how we can effectively spend the resources that we have.
Thank you. And my next question, Madam Chair, through you to the town manager, again, I do understand that we're going to be looking at the contract again with Casella and stuff like that. And, I mean, I could be totally out of line, but there's always issues in our community about barrels, lids flying off everywhere, and so on and so forth. If at all possible, and I could be far-fetched, but I'd like to try to get everything I can out of a person, whatever it may be, is it possible that Casella will be open-minded about giving residents in this community a MSW barrel? So they're very good about giving us a recycling barrel. But you go to different communities, and they might be paying, and I'm sure they are paying that. But if it's all possible, I believe I heard the number of over 6,000, you know, I look at it twofold. I look at it as, I understand Casella's in a business, and I understand that we do benefit and reap from that business. But again, I'm always looking for that little extra, it's so-called, because I'm looking at other people's communities' trash coming in from wherever. And rightfully so, they're in a business, they're there to make money. But as being a good tenant, you say, or landlord, they'd be willing to extend the branch and say, "Every resident in this town's going to get green for MSW, and blue is going to be..." And again, I could be totally out of line, but if you don't ask, you never receive.
Actually, that is something that we have had some discussions about. Actually, again, that was part of our discussion this afternoon, and, you know, that may be part of the plan. More likely than not, the 72,000 that we have allocated would probably use some of that resource to go towards maybe doing a phased implementation on that. So it is something that we are looking at. I do think that that does make a lot of sense, to have some uniformity for the residents, to make it simple. It helps with the enforcement, to make it simple, as you indicated, one blue, one green, you know, real simple stuff. You know, I think the easier we make it, then when we do have those transients come in, you know, you make it so simple that it's easier for us to enforce, and it's easier for them to actually use it too. So actually, those are the kind of things that will be on the table, and we will discuss. But I would ask, just like in everything, sometimes I say, a little bit of patience. I mean, it's just, some of this stuff takes a long time to get in.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else have anything? Counselor Clements?
Just to follow up to a comment in regards to a home, for instance, where you can't get to the landlord and there keeps being violations. I'm going to say this again, I've said it many times in the past when I was advocating for change in fees. According to our bylaw, it says, currently at least, unless we change that, it says owner, occupant, that's the person dwelling in that habitat, whether it be an apartment or a single family. And if you've got a house that has multiple violations, and you can't get to the deceased person who owns it, or it's in the court system or whatever, you can certainly knock on the door and give that fine to the person living there, because that is the person breaking the law in our town. And every resident in this community should abide by the same bylaws, not just the property owner. So I would suggest, in that case, and if there's others, that we do our job and we enforce our bylaw, and we make the people respect this community. And you, because it will go, if they choose not to pay and it goes to the court, it becomes a penalty on their person, and then they have issues with registering their car or doing whatever it is they have to do, according to this was the information we've gotten. So let's make everybody accountable. I applaud the landlords that have been really complying, and I see loads of waste containers with "one, two, three," or whatever it is. Everyone has really gotten on board with getting their tenants to, you know, "Here's your container, do the right thing." But at some point, you have to still make not just the landlords or the, you know, the owners, but the people who are breaking the law comply. So, you know, it's not the person who owns the car who drove fast, it's the guy who got in the car and drove it. And maybe he doesn't own that car, but he gets the ticket, not the person who owned the car. Same thing with the trash. Let's make sure the right people are getting penalized.
My comment through Madam Chair is, we might have to look at the bylaw then and make the proper adjustments to that. And that, you know, the town attorney could help us with that. It's my feeling, and I'm guessing I wasn't here in 1996 or wherever when the bylaw was written, but they seem to mimic the habitation code. In the habitation code, it almost appears to be word for word out of the habitation code. And there, it's usually the landlord's responsibility. So if it proves out that that's what it is, we're going to have to change that. So then, as a default mechanism, if the landlord's not there and we get an eyewitness account or something that that resident put it at the curb, then yeah, we would, you know, transfer the violation forward. But I believe the current bylaw does not allow us to do that.
The current bylaw uses the word "occupant." There are different sections of that. I'm not going to argue about it, but...
Right. I would defer to the town attorney and get an opinion on that.
We'll look at that. That's actually an interesting approach.
Anybody else have anything further on this issue? I want to thank you very much, all of you, for attending this evening and presenting this very volatile issue. And if there's nothing else, enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to go through Citizens Forum, and then I'm taking a break. Me and my head. Okay. Agenda item number eight is Citizens Forum. Any citizen that wishes to come forward? Now's your time.
Hello, hello? This is my first time in front of the town council. Please be nice to me. My name is Max Golicson, and I live on Newell Ave in Southbridge. I'm here tonight to urge all registered voters of Southbridge to come out and support the Bay Path Initiative vote, which occurs on October 4th, which is next Thursday. The polls will be open from noon to 8:00 PM, which is different than the normal hours of 8:00 to 8:00. Bay Path has served our town well for the past 40 years. I will bet there aren't very many people in Southbridge who don't know someone who benefited from Bay Path. Bay Path, since inception 40 years ago, has been interwoven in the educational fabric of our town. Bay Path High School has been the partner school with Southbridge High since its inception. Of all the 10 communities who send their kids to Bay Path, Southbridge is the charter community. We are the oldest and largest member. I'm here tonight to urge all of you to vote yes on the Bay Path renovation project on October 4th. After 40 years, countless repairs, mostly done in-house, and getting the most out of what they have, Bay Path, much in the way Southbridge High did, needs a do-over. Our new middle high school is a big upgrade to the quality of our community. And now, in a similar way, Bay Path also needs to be made new. Southbridge is being asked to pick up a small part of the overall cost of this project. In fact, Southbridge is being asked to pick up a much smaller amount for Bay Path than for the new middle high school, due to the fact that Southbridge is splitting the cost with the nine other member towns. In November, our nation is holding an election to choose our next president. And normally, that's the big one, that's the most important one. But to me, this year, the one on October 4th will allow your vote to matter in a much greater way. A yes vote for this project will show that Southbridge is aware of the consistent, long-term, positive relationship we have had with Bay Path High School. I'm here tonight to tell everyone that your very important yes vote on October 4th will help guarantee that our town continues to have the most excellent public high school option for our kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Golicson. Do we have anybody else who wishes to come forward?
I just have a quick question. John Poloski, Old Woodstock Road. I brought this up back in May or June, when it was revealed that our recycling rate was so good. In our agreement with the landfill operator, we were supposed to get, it's about 10% increase on the tipping fees. And I was curious if we've been able to achieve that yet, or if there's still some resistance in the increase of tipping fees now that our recycling rate is so stellar. Perhaps, Mr. Town Manager, if you know that.
I think it was actually a specific dollar increase for those communities that have a recycling rate that is less than the town of Southbridge. So it has a provision in it to kind of graduate.
Yes, sir.
I don't know the percentages, that's my hesitation. I don't believe it's...
Well, I think it may be 50 cents, so I'm approximating, it was about 10%.
Yeah, I just, because those numbers do change.
Yes, sir.
They add by inflation each year. But actually, one of the things that is being worked on is a process to figure out what other communities do have that have a single vendor that picks up. We are in the process of trying to find, how do you grade? How do you find out what the other communities have that are bringing that material to the landfill? So that way, we can effectuate that element of the contract. And where that may appear on the surface to be a fairly easy endeavor, it's not as easy as it appears, because there's only about two or three other communities, I believe, that could... other communities, I believe, that Cessla operates in, that they actually have recycling rates. And the other thing that makes life a little difficult is the DEP no longer requires that information to be collected.
It used to be required every town, yes.
So it is, it is a little bit of a difficult animal, but we are continuing to pursue that. And if we can pursue it and know, I want to be careful how I use the word definitively, but know with reasonable certainty what other towns are, then that would be used as a measuring board. It is, it is an element of the contract that was negotiated, and we will do our best to attempt to enforce that.
And I'm trying to make a polite reminder here. I don't want to be accused of arguing in the newspaper. But in our site assignment, we are promised an incentive program as well. And as I recall, even when we were discussing the changes with this education program, Mr. Moran suggested it. And I'm sure it's not an easy thing to put together, but there could be something similar to Recycle Bank, where people could get some sort of reward in addition to, you know, whatever the town benefits. And perhaps as we are negotiating, we can inhabit, because it is, we have the, it's in the site assignment, an incentive program. It doesn't have to be Recycle Bank. It doesn't say Recycle Bank. But perhaps some local merchants might want to participate in that. And just an update, last day, last week, I didn't remember if it was dichlorobenzene or dichlorobenzene, the chemical that's showing up in the water table. This isn't a test I did. This is a test available at the Board of Health. It's dichlorobenzene, which is a D C B. This is something new. It, the other chemicals or elements that were high, the chromium and the arsenic and the lead, those have been showing up over a period of time. But the D C B, the dichlorobenzene is something that showed up, I think, in the June test. I don't know if it was in the September test. They haven't been made available yet. But just to simplify things, it's an insecticide and it's not a large amount. I think it's parts per billion. But these are things. Gus Steve's wrote a very good editorial last Friday, pointing out that even the register tapes have chemicals that can, under certain conditions, he pointed out sunlight, 1% of the time, in water can cause it. I've read other studies in which heat, which we do get in landfills as things compost. Heat can also cause PCBs, which unfortunately is everywhere, it seems. I bet, I understand they're even showing up in the Antarctic. But if we can keep it to a minimum, I'm trying to legis, I'm trying to get legislators to require people that work at registers to wear plastic gloves, just like people that prepare our food, not to, not to save us from, to save them from the exposure to this, this chemical. But anyway, thank you for your time. Thank you, and thank you for serving our town. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that was brought up at the, at the last meeting and through the comments made. I did look into that issue. And just for clarity's sake, yes, the test results came back. I believe it was on one or two, I think it was just the one wellhead, but I'm not 100% certain to that. And it came in one quarterly report, the last quarterly report or last quarterly test that was done. One of the things that, that maybe the speaker wasn't aware of is that that was actually in a new well. And when they drill a new well, they actually have to use lubricating fluids. Sometimes, I don't know if they're petroleum based or what the exact base is, but sometimes when they drill those in to get the test wells in, I know some folks went on the tour of the landfill the other day, that you have to drill, literally drill holes into the landfill to extract the methane gas out of it. And it is believed at this point, and it is being double-checked, which is standard protocol, that there could be a false positive, that those numbers came back high in some of those areas because it could be lubricating fluids. So it is something that is of concern. One of the things that, that needs to be always pointed out is that you can dig in your own backyard and hide, and find high traces of arsenic. We are in an arsenic vein in Southbridge, and fortunately for us, more so in even Charlton. So, you know, there is high levels of arsenic that is in the ground. It's just the way we are, it's the way the ground is. So some of those chemicals are naturally found, which also makes it difficult in the testing, because you know you're going to find them, but you have to find them at levels that are beyond what the natural scope is and the terrain in which it's being drilled. So it's not such a simple answer, but we will stay on top of that because one test did come back at higher levels than anticipated, and we will keep an eye on it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do we have any other citizens wishing to come forward?
Good evening. Kevin Buxton, 255 Elm Street. I'll keep this brief. Let me first thank the town for having that presentation. It was very informative. And I'm glad to hear that work is being made for a review of the present extension agreement. I'd like to remind the council that one of the, we see difficulties in citizens following a bylaw that's been in, in the books for 20 years. One of the important things to be, to be on the punch list for that re-review of the extension agreement is the fact that the scope of service for the curbside pickup itself doesn't comply with our bylaw system. At a EHS meeting, at the end of an EHS meeting, I made a comment that, about the hauler leaving trash barrels upside down after they emptied them. And I'm happy to say I received, after sending information request on the, on the matter, I'm happy to say I received an email today stating that an administrative meeting was held and that the, the situation was addressed. It really helps as far as clean up, keeping Southbridge clean of litter, because when those barrels were being tipped upside down, there's a possibility anything stuck in it. Somebody had suggested to me of getting a container with a lid on it. And just happened to have this prop available. So one of the situations with using this type of container, a lot of people, you see them around, but our present bylaw is a tight-fitting lid. Now, this lid is held on by gravity. Another watertight container, you drop this in the river, it's going to sink. So through continued work on getting a bylaw that we all are happy with, getting a scope of service that we are all content with that mimics the bylaw, and continued work and effort through recycling and our curbside program, I myself am glad to be part of the landfill oversight committee, which is an advisory board to the Board of Health, as well as the sustainability committee, which is, as well as advisory board to the Board of Health, involved with recycling. So I think I'm glad to see the presentation, and we all need to keep our continued work to see the system get better and better. Thank you.
Any other citizens wishing to come forward?
I'm Thomas Ayaw from 35 Beach Street. I'm on the town trails committee. I'd like to make the announcement about the National Public Lands Day on Saturday, the 29th of September. It's, we are partnering, or it's in conjunction with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, who are hosting us at Westville Dam. They're, they're hosting a number of towns in the region, Brimfield, Sturbridge. But our part will be to meet at the project office on the end of Marjorie Lane. I hope everyone knows where that is. It's rather obscure, but Marjorie Lane off of South Street, the next street over from West Street, out of town. The, the project office at 9:00 in the morning. We'll meet there. We'll be working on the, what we're referring to as the Heritage Trail Extension. It's the Heritage Trail extending from the river up to Marjorie Lane. It's an ADA accessible trail. The grade is ADA accessible. The surface is not quite there, but we'll be refining the slopes and the, the surface. So if you can come out and help at 9:00 Saturday morning, bring water bottles to fill or bring water bottles and gloves, that would be good. But other tools will be provided, or you can bring your favorite tool to move dirt around. At noon, there will be a pizza lunch at the Westville Recreation Center. So it's only a short period. It's mainly to publicize this event, this national event, National Public Lands Day. Any questions?
Mr. Ayaw, is the project office overlooking the actual dam?
Yes, correct. The dam office, that's correct.
Okay, just, just for anybody who was trying to figure that one out, that's where it is. It's overlooking the dam.
That's right. It's the.
And the slope with the geese on it. Yep. It's in my mind. I got it. Thank you. Does anybody else have?
It's the Southbridge side of the office, right. It's the little house, administrative facility there. Not, well, hey.
Excellent.
Anyway. Anything else? Yes?
If somebody had, if somebody has any questions about this project, who can they get in touch with and how?
Scott Benoit. But they can call me too. 508-765-0401. Thomas Ayaw. I mean, just leave a message on my answering machine. I screen my calls, speak up. You know, leave a message, leave a number for callback. I will call you back. Anything else?
Looks like that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizens wishing to come forward? Okay. Before we get into the actual votes, I'm going to take a five-minute break. Been doing this for two hours. Okay. Back to order, please. Oh, here they come. Agenda item number nine. Vote to ratify the contract between the town of Southbridge and House of Destiny for FY 2012 CDBG grant funds in the amount of $50,000. Do we have any discussion, Councilor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is this a renewal of a previous grant that we did last year?
No, these are the grants that were approved last year that are now coming into, into their own, so to speak. They're now going to be opened up and the money will be provided.
Okay. My, my question would be, when I look at this, I see the terms ministry in here, and I'm just concerned that public funds might be used for a specific religious purpose.
Well, the council voted this in last year. So at this point, it's, it is what it is, so to speak, but I'm going to let the manager speak.
Yeah, just two, two parts. Madam Chair, I think, has it right that in terms of what the process was, was voted by the council, and then the actual application that was submitted was also voted by the council. So this is really, I guess, the, the third step to actually approve the contract. Councilor McDonald is correct, it is a religious institution. So long as the religious institution only engages in secular activity for the purposes of the grant, that they are eligible to apply. And in this, I believe it's a tutoring-type program, so as long as they don't have the education elements of, I'm sorry, the religious education elements, and it's strictly education, that this should be compliant.
Madam Chair, follow-up to that. My question would be then, is how do we know that or regulate that, to be sure, as far as?
Well, these, these applications go through a pretty detailed vetting process before they ever even make it to the subcommittee level. There is a, um, a group that reviews everything, and actually, I'm, I'm going to let Councilor Clements answer this because she's been part of the process in the past. Counselor, could you kind of give him more information on that, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of the, the name was, had changed, House of Destiny. They just, they did have a name change because they went through some 501(c)(3), my understanding. Basically, this is the Bridge of Faith Youth Group, Community Center, excuse me, and Esteban Carrasco. And they have been in the process of creating this youth group program on Main Street, which is completely educational-based, that they want to provide tutoring and a leg up, almost in a sense, a lot like in a SPIRA program, but really in generalized for the entire community. And while he has a religious element and, you know, he is a minister for the, the House of Destiny, I've, we did vet this program out. We did ask these questions a year, two years, as it came up, when the grants first came out, to make sure that there was no overlap on the religious component. And beyond morals and, and good, wanting to provide good youth for this community and keep them out of trouble and have a good after-school program, we didn't see any problem with that, with it, with those two overlapping. So we did approve this grant over a year ago, and now it's time to implement. And as the chair said, Sandy Ackley's office is in, is in contact with any of these, whether it's SPIRA, whether it's Los Americas, whether it's any of these programs, to make sure that the monies are going. There's a curriculum laid out, there are goals and objectives they have to meet, and they monitor that on a regular basis throughout the process, throughout the, the timeframe that they disperse the monies. And the monies are dispersed in a, it's a quarterly or so manner until all the monies are dispersed. So the, you should see the center, it's beautiful on Main Street. They've been working really hard to get this up and running. They've done a lot of work to the old Smash Mouth building. And I went to a, a pre-board meeting, I guess, before they actually elected their officials and stuff, a few months back, beginning of the summertime, and they really outlined a lot of their core elements of what they were hoping to do and teach computer programs and different things. And really, it's just another area for the kids to get extra help after they're out of the school, sort of that, that timeframe, when the parents might not be around, maybe they're working. They just need a place to be and off the streets, and, and that's what they're providing them, is some good moral and, and strong, strong adult, what's mentoring, I guess, would be the, the term. So, so I have no problem with this myself, but certainly that's, we did vet it, we did approve it, and now it's just a matter of implementing it and, and the funds being dispersed. So I don't know if you still have problems, questions?
I can't hear you. Please speak up.
771, Lebanon Hill?
Okay.
Um, I'm really nervous about this whole separation of church and state thing. I know that you guys have talked about this before, and I guess it was at a subcommittee meeting that that was brought up, but I really don't want to be setting a precedent that we're giving religious organizations money, because on number 11, you're accepting preparations for new CBGB, whatever. And are you gonna, I just don't want you to be giving more money to religious organizations.
Well, I kind of think that Councilor Clements just explained that this isn't going to a religious organization, but take that into consideration.
But how, how is that going to be separated? How do we know that they're not going to be proselytizing?
Well, I think that, as Councilor Clements said, we have a group, Sandy Ackley and her, her assistants, that have to keep tabs on what these people are doing and making sure that they're following the, the proposal that they put forth, that they were approved on, and if they don't, they don't get the money. Period. So, yeah, we're, we're keeping an eye on that. Ms. Doyle?
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay? You're welcome. Did you have something you wanted to add?
Just in, in terms of the, the contract specifically has, to the question, that it has the scope of services outlined in Attachment A, which is the, the submission that was done. Just quickly here, it says, "We'll target 150 low, moderate income, high-risk children and teenagers after school and weekends, teaching them how to take advantage of educational and economic tools and opportunities." So there's no element of religion in, in that, and parts of the contract do have also the non-discrimination elements that they have to follow, and that just becomes a, an additional element that has to be complied with in the contract.
Okay. Counselor Pellequin?
I was curious as to whether, if, given that there are some concerns in the community, whether a citizen would be able to request to review the curriculum that's going to be funded by this grant, or if that would not be subject to public records law, because it's a grant to a, a separate entity.
I heard some of that.
I can repeat it.
There's nothing in there? Go ahead.
I would imagine the, the initial document, the initial proposal that they gave to us would be in the, in the Economic Development Office, and you, it's a good size. Every one of these CDBG grants has quite a large, what's the, they have to do a proposal for us, and you go through the whole process and, and vet the proposal as to whether it's benefit or not benefit, or, and, and they had to outline what they were going to do. So I'm sure what you're looking for would then be in there. And that's how they set the criteria, then, to determine whether or not they're meeting their goals, and whether or not they get, they continue to get the money, because we don't just give them a check for $50,000. We give them a certain amount, and we want to make sure they're meeting their goals. Are they servicing the community in the way they said, and, and is everything on the up and up, and, and, you know, so certainly they can pull the plug at any time. But, because you'll probably be reviewing other grants as they come forward now, and the new, in the new proposals that are going to come up, and so you'll see that. But certainly, I'm sure Sandy will make that available to you, if you want to read the proposal and how we, same with Los Americas, same with the SPIRA, Center of Hope, any of the ones that were literacy volunteers. They have to tell us what they're doing with the money and how they're applying it, so.
I was just asking on behalf of the citizen, so.
Right, well, right.
There's the answer. There's the answer. Counselor Regis?
Just a couple of comments. These, these grant funds are monitored and evaluated by our local people, Sandy and, and her staff. They're also monitored and reviewed and audited by the state. There are communities who choose to do different things with their funds. We choose to have a social services component of ours. Other communities do not. But all of this is also reviewed by the state. Also, just where Mr. Clark was reading, the Attachment A, they're not just pulling from their membership, I guess. The, the, the centers receiving referrals from the Southbridge Police Department, New Hope Agency, Church and Juvenile Probation Departments. So they're taking referrals for their program from other agencies which are not religious-based organizations. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, the term that concerns me is it says ministries in it, and then it says, more specifically, picking up on what the manager said, "More specifically, House of Destiny, Inc., will undertake and execute the following activities. The sub-grantee shall implement the project described in the town's approval," the document you're referring to, "in fiscal year 2012 grant entitled Bridge of Faith Youth Center Project, and made part of this agreement." Down further, it says, "Utilizing rented space, the Bridge of Faith will open after school and on weekends." I, I think it's a great program, and kind of torn here, because I, I support that kind of thing, and as Counselor Clements had alluded to about also providing moral background, that's where some people could have some concern with that. If they're inside of a building and there are religious symbols, or there are posters up on the wall, I, I think it could get us into trouble if later on we have other organizations that are looking for it. For example, Catholic schools that are looking for the, to the same thing in their programs, or any other religious or faith-based organization. And that would just be my, my concern and my reservation. I think those concerns have been addressed to some degree by the comments made by Counselor Regis and Counselor Clements, though. But I still, I, I see this as, as being very difficult to enforce and could be a problem. I am going to support it, based upon the answers given by the manager and my fellow counselors, but I, I do think we just need to be careful. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anything further on this? Oh, very little.
Very little. I use the word morals because it just kind of came up, but to me, morals are society's norms. So affiliated with religion or not, we have norms in our society. When I think of morals, I think of, "Let's teach them not to steal and not to lie and cheat and, and, you know, whatever, not to harm other people." To me, that's my morals. It's whether you believe in a, a higher power or not. So I wasn't looking at it as a religious moral, I was looking at it as a society norm. I just wanted to clarify the word morals, for me.
Thank you.
All right.
Anything further? Could we have a roll call, please?
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Pellequin?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Landjevan?
Yes.
Counselor Makuchi?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Agenda item number 10. Vote to ratify the contract between the town of Southbridge and literacy volunteers for FY 2012 CDBG grant funds in the amount of $50,000.
Come on.
I will be recusing myself from this vote as a person who's been affiliated with literacy
volunteers for many years. Any questions on this one? Could I have a roll call, please?
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Pellequin?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Landjevan?
Yes.
Counselor Makuchi?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Eight yes, one recused?
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Holly Cristo, and I'm the Executive Director of the Literacy Volunteers of Central Massachusetts. On behalf of our organization, I just want to express my appreciation for this very generous grant. These funds will enable us to provide much-needed services to our community. Literacy tutors do more than just teach adults to read, write, and speak English. They serve as mentors and liaisons to a successful and integrated life in society. Increased literacy leads to a better understanding of physician's instructions and healthcare plans. It allows individuals to better manage chronic healthcare issues such as diabetes by allowing access to literature related to their disease. Increased literacy in parents enables them to serve as role models and mentors to their families, and has a direct correlation on increased academic performance in their children. Children from homes where reading is a common activity, where there are books available, and where they see their parents engaged in reading, are more likely to engage in reading activities themselves. Our tutors have helped their students find better housing, assisted in job searches, and coached individuals on the path to citizenship. Job and business opportunities follow increased literacy through expanded skill sets and improved access to educational opportunities. Literacy volunteers of South Central Mass is often the most intimate, supportive, and personal pathway to a better life. I want to thank you again for this investment in improving the community we all live in. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Agenda item number 11. Vote to accept preparations for a new CDBG application, Social Services, RFP, as written for new CDBG application for FY 2013 funds. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Pellequin?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Landjevan?
Yes.
Counselor Makuchi?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number 12. Vote to adopt local option increase to benefits payable to widows and widowers of disabled public employees under Section 101, Chapter 139 of the Acts of 2012.
Come on.
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In accordance with Mass. General Act 268(a), I'll recuse myself, as I have a relative that's affected by this agenda item. Thank you, Madam Chair.
We have a roll call, please?
Counselor Pellequin?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Landjevan?
Yes.
Counselor Makuchi?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Eight yes, one recused?
13. Vote to ratify the acceptance of Mass. DOT grant in the amount of $6,120 to purchase a zero-turn radius mower for airport maintenance, and to allocate $1,529.99 towards this purchase from allocated DPW funds for equipment repairs and maintenance. Account number 1.499.5241.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Landjevan?
Yes.
Counselor Makuchi?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Pellequin?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Agenda item 14. Vote to ratify the contract between the town of Southbridge and Stan Kibinsky Incorporated for the demolition, demolition of two derelict properties for a total amount of $37,535.
Come on.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Landjevan?
Yes.
Counselor Makuchi?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Pellequin?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you. 15. Vote to approve proposed amendments to Bylaw, Chapter 6, Section 6-100, quote, "Licenses and Licensing Regulations for the Town of Southbridge," end quote, "for secondhand junk, precious metals, and old metals regulations." This is the first reading.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A few meetings back, we had some discussion about changing the bylaw relative to the trash fines. And we said that, as a group, we decided it wasn't prudent to do, because we wanted to wait till the bylaw review committee had done its work. So my question would be, then, we should, why are we doing it with this one, when in all actuality, we should postpone this until they're done their work?
That's a good question. Do you have an answer for him? Or should we just set this aside and allow the bylaw review committee to continue to do their work?
Two, two things. Number one, just as a reminder, that you actually have to read the, the thing in order for it to count. So we will have to do that. Just, we, we had an issue with that before. And then, secondly, there was an extensive discussion at the subcommittee, and the chief made a failure in passion plea, and, and I agree with him that this is something that people are at Red to protect the residents. But obviously, the council can go either way it wants. I think the subcommittee did hear that and wanted to pursue that. So, that's why it's before you this evening, Madam Chair.
I see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Clemens?
Thank you. Being that, actually, Counsel Pellequin, Counsel Pellequin had brought this up, and we were both thinking the exact same thing at the general government meeting. And as I did not agree with postponing the changing of that particular bylaw because we are the legislative body and there are things that will come up, and there are times when the bylaws need to be changed, and while we're reviewing the entire concept, does not mean that we should negate our responsibilities to do what we need to do. I was, I am going to support the changing of the bylaw now, even though precedent set would have been send it to the bylaw review committee. Because I personally think, as the compelling argument was made at the meeting, it was worth pursuing. So, that's my reasoning for continuing to support this, even though the other item did not pass that. Thank you.
One second. I'd like to hear from the chief. I'd like to hear why this is compelling.
In my 30-plus years of policing, I've never seen breaks and thefts in such epidemic proportions all throughout the Commonwealth. You've probably all seen the pieces in the paper about houses literally being broken into that are empty to have copper cut out of them. I've received calls from the local church that people were trying to steal the brass off the front of the church. It gets horrendous where people are stealing the brass plaques off of veterans' cemetery plots. We have seen all kinds of these pieces come through our community, be bought and sold by secondhand shops. So, it is a reaction to a terrible reality that's happening right now. We've seen a rash of this ourselves in our community and those bordering us. And I think this would be a very good tool to help us protect those people who are being victimized.
Thank you. Okay.
Just quickly, just a point of clarification, I guess procedurally. So, we can't vote to waive the first two readings and then just wait and actually read the entire bylaw and the third reading? We can't vote to waive?
Yes.
Waive the reading? I thought we could do that.
May I? We had looked into that years ago, and it's one of those glitches between being a town and a city. A city ordinance, you can do in a single reading. That's my understanding, is what we went through prior. And because we're a town and do it as bylaws, it does require the three readings.
And I understand that. This is considered the first reading, but can't we actually waive the actual reading of the bylaw?
Just for Madam Chair, so she doesn't get tired.
Obviously, Counsel McDonald has the answer.
No, no, I was wondering.
Go ahead. Thank you. And technically, we are a city in terms of our bylaws. That's why the Attorney General doesn't review our bylaws. So, I think Counsel Regis is correct that we could waive the first two readings and only do it in the third reading.
Counsel Clemens?
Might I suggest that you just read the paragraph that, there's only a couple of spots you were changing on this. It wasn't the entire paragraph, it wasn't the entire, just that new section. Just read the new section. To inform the public.
Maybe to that point, maybe I can just do a summary.
Take a motion.
For lack of a better.
I'm just thinking of the time and Madam Chair.
In terms of the time.
Okay. If you'd like to do that, be my guest. Go ahead. I'm just, I don't.
We actually are changing Section 6.102.3 by adding in new elements under the permanent record to be kept. This will include a description of different items that are going to be retained. Secondhand items are included. All transactions will be inspected by the Chief of Police or an officer duly authorized by the Chief of Police. On the second page, 6.102.6, holding period before the sale, basically gives discretion to the chief to have people hold it for up to 30 days and as short as 48 hours. Then it does also allow for the manager to allow for this to have a shorter period. There has to be also, has to be a waiting period in which they have items in the store with a release date. And there are some items that are exempt if you have an auction, estate purchase, estate sales, things of that nature. When item 6-102.7, notification to police regarding possible stolen property. 102.8, receipt of articles from a minor. So, there's prohibitions against those two. And then, item 102.9, examination and removal of articles. Goes through a description of what the process entails. And then, lastly, is the enforcement and penalties under 102.10. And the first offense within 24-hour period violation would be $50. The second offense within a 24-hour period, $100. Third and subsequent offense within 24-month period, I'm sorry, those were month periods, $300. So, it does have a progressive graduating penalty as well.
Thank you.
And we will make this available for anyone that's interested. Just for the full reading, it will be available for any resident or the newspaper that would like it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So, this is the first reading. I have a motion and a second on this. Counsel Pellequin?
Just to, in the general interest of transparency, we have another bylaw regarding the posting or the publication of bylaws. Section 1-107, at least 10 days before a final passage of a general bylaw, accepting an emergency bylaw. And I don't know if an emergency bylaw is defined anywhere in our bylaws. It said that it needs to be posted for at least 10 days, published once in a local newspaper, and posted on the town bulletin board. Such proposed bylaw shall also be posted in full on the town website and be available in the office of the town clerk. And I just wanted to bring that up to make sure that happens.
In your opinion, chief, has this reached emergency, I mean, levels? I know that at the last town council meeting, one of the counselors asked a question regarding recent break-ins, and I know that you, your men had done a great job of actually apprehending the thief and his accomplice. Is this, would you consider this to be an emergency situation?
Yes, I still do, because all the communities around us are still getting hit, and we have had another break, too. So, I would like to see this go forward as swiftly as the council can. Thank you.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to consider this an emergency bylaw. And with that, if it does pass as an emergency bylaw, move to follow. Follow, it's the protocol.
Yes.
Put it in the newspaper so that everyone can see it. 10 days, go from there. The council has voted on it. If the council does vote on it, and after it's done its due process, move ahead with it. If it's an emergency, if our chief feels that this is reaching an emergency level, I don't see where it does us any good to, you know, take six weeks to get this thing going as opposed to 10 days.
I'll make that in the form of a motion, Madam Chair.
Okay. I think that what we'd want to do is probably do that and then vote on it. So, are you comfortable with that?
I guess I'm a little bit concerned because I got the impression we're just waiving the readings, but that we're still going to go through the three reading process, and it would still take six weeks.
I don't think so.
And listening to that, I don't recall reading that, so I just like, that came out of our bylaw book.
Yeah, it's our bylaw book.
I'll have to look, go back. I don't remember that sentence.
I have a question about that. That's the only place I've seen in our bylaw book where it makes sort of reference to an emergency bylaw, and I've never seen it quantified anywhere else. So, legally, I don't really know what we can and can't do with that language.
Madam Chair, if I could, and I'm going to have to read it, but I guess I would be comfortable that if we do the emergency preamble and to do that, administration will implement this as if it is a bylaw as of once we conclude our posting requirement within the 10 days. But I do believe that we probably should just do the formality of reading it the three times. But I think why don't we vote it tonight and then let the town attorney and I do a little bit of homework to see what we have to come back, if there's any additional steps to take. Because I was, emergency stuff, at least when it comes to the state, is usually a fairly strict definition. And I would rather side on the side of, it's clear to me what the council's intent is, and I think there's some latitude for administration to implement it immediately while we're doing the process. So, if we do an emergency reading and if we have to come back, we'll have a formal legal opinion on it.
Okay. All right. Well, then, let's vote on that, on your motion. Counsel McDonald?
I'll second that. But I think the manager's correct. There is a specific definition of emergency, and I do not believe that this rises to the level of what would be considered an emergency.
Well, I'm going to err on the side of, in this case, prudence, not caution. And I'm going to allow this to go through as an emergency. And if, in reviewing that stuff, they determine that we can't, then we can't. But if they find that we can, then we've already set our side in motion, and they can move on this. That's what I'm going to do. So, with your second and everybody having a discussion on that, can I have a roll call, please, on this is on determining this to be an emergency bylaw?
Counsel Clemens?
Yes.
Counsel Landjevan?
Yes.
Counsel Makuchi?
Yes.
Counsel McDonald?
Yes.
Counsel Moriarty?
Yes.
Counsel Nicola?
Yes.
Counsel Pellequin?
No.
Counsel Regis?
Yes.
Counsel Vandal?
Yes.
Eight yes, one no?
Thank you. Okay. And now, to vote on the actual proposed amendment to the bylaw. I had a motion and a second on that. If there's no further discussion, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Counsel Landjevan?
Yes.
Counsel Makuchi?
Yes.
Counsel McDonald?
Yes.
Counsel Moriarty?
Yes.
Counsel Nicola?
Yes.
Counsel Pellequin?
No.
Counsel Regis?
Yes.
Counsel Vandal?
Yes.
Eight yes, one no?
Thank you. Okay. And now, to vote on the actual proposed amendment to the bylaw. I had a motion and a second on that. If there's no further discussion, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Counsel Landjevan?
Yes.
Counsel Makuchi?
Yes.
Counsel McDonald?
Yes.
Counsel Moriarty?
Yes.
Counsel Nicola?
Yes.
Counsel Pellequin?
Yes.
Counsel Regis?
Yes.
Counsel Vandal?
Yes.
Counsel Clemens?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you. So, please keep us.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know?
Absolutely.
Okay. Agenda item number 16, vote to request the Office of the State Auditor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to conduct an audit of certain activities of Southbridge Police Department for the period July 1, 2007 through June 30, 2012.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Counsel Regis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say that the entire council signed this. I signed it because I feel that it's important for this body to put forth the united front in some cases, and I believe this is one of them. However, I do feel the need to comment on this. We all have to take responsibility, and, you know, when there's elections, it's all about, you know, accountability and open government and all those buzzwords and all of that stuff. When this is all said and done, and I have in my mind how this is going to come out, and that being the case, if there are recommendations that are made that go by way of which require maybe more funding, that's our accountability. We have a chief who implements and does what he does with the budget we give him. And if this comes back saying that there are some inadequacies with that budget, then I'm going to look to this council and say, okay, man up, woman up, give him more money to do what he needs to do. I'm also going to look at our union members. There's been a big ado about training. And I know that training was plentiful about 10 years ago. Since then, because there was a lot of free training going on and being offered by the state, that has dried up, most of it. And we have to pay for that training. Everyone's aware of that. If this is that important to union members, then maybe there's some concessions that they're going to need to make when it comes to overtime for training and things like that. Because this is very important to all of us. That's what's been said, that's what this says, and that's what we're saying to the state, to come in here and do this. So, I just want to make it clear, this is a united front. I don't have a problem with that. But however this comes out, those of us who have the control over what can be done to fix what's wrong need to be accountable. That goes for us, that goes for everyone involved in this. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Anyone else? Counselor Moriarty?
I'd like to offer amendment to the motion that in the event the State Auditor's Office deems that any of the audit objectives are out of their purview of the State Auditor's Office, that the town shall, through an RFP, secure the services of a police department management consultant to fill in those gaps.
I'll second that. Do I have any discussion on the amendment? Before we move on, I have something to say. Speaking of accountability, I signed this petition, and I've regretted it ever since. It was a mistake for me to sign it. I don't believe in it. I won't support it. I don't care about the united front up here. I don't believe there is a united front up here. I find this to be odious. It is not what it is. There's an awful lot behind it, and I'm not comfortable with that. It says a lot of things to me. None of them are good. I support the town manager. I support the police chief. I think that they are both doing a good job. I think the town, our police chief, does an excellent job with what he has given. And I don't like the timing of this, and I don't like it. I won't support it. I don't care if I'm the only one that doesn't support it. And it will come back, that there's going to be money that we're going to have to extract. And I can assure you, there will be members of this council that will wiggle real uncomfortable in their seats. of this council that will wiggle real uncomfortable in their seats. I am not at all in agreement with the petition. I made a mistake. I'll say it again, I made a mistake. I signed it without reading it in its entirety, I rationalized that there's nothing to concern myself with, it's, there's nothing there, and the reality is, it's not a responsible thing to do, at least for Counselor Nicola. And I wanted the town to understand that when you hear no, that's why you're going to hear no, is because I don't agree with this, I don't like it in the least. As for other counselors, you're all entitled to your own opinion and your own way of looking at this, and that's fine, but for me, this is not going to be a good thing. It is going to cost this community money that we do not have, for a force that is doing a pretty darn good job considering what they do have. And I am going to stick by my opinion and what I've seen for the better part of seven and a half years, sitting on this council and attending subcommittee meetings, going to budget meetings and looking what's been done. You have a department that has constantly put back money, and that's a good thing, it's not a bad thing. The school department sends back money, too. We're going to audit them? Anyway, that's my opinion, and I'm going to just go with it. Counselor Clements?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also would have to, in somewhat agree with Counselor Regis, but on another vein, I do not. I also signed this petition, I was out of town, it was sent to me. I agree that everybody had signed, and I thought, well, let's get it up here for discussion because that's what we're supposed to do when there's a concern out there. I also agree that the police department, I believe, is running pretty darn good, and that while we brought it up here for discussion so that we could do something with it, I think what it should be done, and what should have been done to begin with, is that it was sent down to subcommittee to discuss all these concerns, because clearly, there are employee concerns in some way, shape, or form, and that is out of our purview as counselors, that is under the manager's jurisdiction and the department head's jurisdiction. I also want to point out to some of you, or to all of you, that, and maybe some of the counselors don't know, every year, the town gets audited, a number of departments get audited, usually one or two, or whatever, they get audited, it's random. Last year, the police department was audited and came out financially just fine, that was not a problem. And since then, Grants, Grants has been audited numerous times, just last week, Jose Dingies, who's in charge of Grants at the police station, I understand, it was just last week or within the last few weeks, Grants were audited, that wasn't a problem. Under Woodson, there was an audit, it was fine, a year ago or so, my understanding. And how do you get some of this information? You have to ask questions. As counselors, we need to ask questions, and we need to do the work that we've been put up here to do. So I think that what's come before us has a lot of reasons for coming before us, at the time it has, I think mostly it has to do with employee issues, and I would rather than go forward with this and cost the town a fortune, because we will have to pay for this audit and whatever comes out of it, that I would rather that we remand the town manager to go once again and discuss, perhaps with the union, perhaps with the police chief, perhaps with those he needs to, a number of the concerns that are here, and that we have a subcommittee meeting for PPP, which all counselors are welcome to attend, of course, and we discuss more of the concerns and all, and find out, is it really necessary? Is this really being born out of a necessity that this community has to run the financial burden to do, or is it something else potentially? And if we can adequately allay the concerns, then perhaps this is not the way to go. And I believe that it's just driving a wedge between what needs to get done and work that's not getting done. And so I would strongly suggest that, for me, that this go to subcommittee, and we can really discuss what's on the sheet, rather than instantly jumping and spending a ton of town money and having an audit that just is not necessary, in my opinion. And as far as the facts go, the audit that was done, that is a fact, and that information is available.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to send it to the subcommittee.
Second.
Counselor McDonald? Thank you, just so we know where we're at in things, we have now a submotion and another submotion, but to address some of the comments that were just made, anybody who's familiar with ISO 9001, the International Standards Organization, should have a basic understanding that an audit is nothing more than a third party coming in and looking at things and saying, do you do this, is this what your process and procedures say, and is it being done? The term odious was used, hateful. There's nothing hateful about doing due diligence, that's what this is about. Several meetings ago, we had an issue brought up where a letter was sent up from the police union. It had some pretty strong statements in it. The town made some pretty strong statements in return, and at a meeting at the library, the manager said, as far as he was concerned, he walked through the police station, and he's fine, and as far as he's concerned, he's not going to take any further action. And to me, that leaves a pall hanging over an atmosphere that's not good for the police chief, it's not good for the police officers on the street, it's not good for this legislative body, it's not good for anybody. And the best way, I think, to handle that is to do exactly this, that's why they have these procedures, and there's nothing, they come in and they identify good best practices, and they tell you where you need to make improvements. And if, I get audited every year in my job, and I know that audit's coming, and I just know that I'm going to get some things that I'm going to be told need to be improved, opportunities for improvement, they're called, or I'm going to get some nonconformities, and I'm going to get some commendations, hopefully, and I think that this is what's going to happen here. This is done, not in an odious spirit, but in a spirit of due diligence, and I think it's my responsibility as an elected official to do that, that's why these procedures are offered and in place. And as far as sending it down to the subcommittee, we don't need to study it any further. I think it should be depoliticized and taken completely out of this council's hands, and I think the appropriate way to do that is in this format. And that's why I'm going to support it, and I'm going to support the amendment made by my colleague to Counselor Moriarty. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Did you want to add something?
Madam Chair, I would like to add something. I think folks in this community know the type of person that I am. I've built my career on high integrity. I believe that with the resources that the town has provided, and I have limited in order to address the needs to live within Proposition Two and a Half, the needs to address what the fiscal will of the community is, and specifically this council, that there's no doubt in my mind that we have built a very good organization, a very sound organization, but to say that we built a perfect organization, or one that meets all the ISO requirements, I think is to mislead people. And I think, as was stated earlier, you know, I have no problem having someone do a review. In fact, each year, when the auditors come, I pick a department and say, go to town on them, see what you can find, and then contrary to maybe what other managers do, I read the management letter, and we take action on the management letter, to always try to do the best we can. But we don't have the resources to do everything perfectly, we don't have the resources to accomplish everything, and by having a third party come in, what I've seen in my past experience is very much that was said, what happens if they come back and say, it would be ideal to have five new officers? Is this council prepared to come up with $300,000, which is basically our Prop Two and a Half, to put that into place as a permanent override? Because that's what it would take to do. The other thing that's in here, the rule under civil service is that you have to live within fifteen miles of the town in which you work in the state. We have officers that live out of state, they meet the fifteen mile rule, and I think if we open up and give someone an opportunity to come in and critique us on how to do things perfectly, or better, that we face a significant risk of unintended consequences. And that concerns me, because I think we do the best with the resources that we have, we're short-staffed, there's no debate about that, I know I've had the ISO thrown at me before and in other grounds. I would also say that I think the spirit in which this was done, you know, quite honestly, is upsetting to me as a professional. I was not given an adequate opportunity to go through this. I did look at the issues that were brought up, when the union addressed them, the union, to my knowledge, I've reached out to ask them if they want to meet, I went down that very next day, I think the next workday, with the chief, showed up at the police station, three or four members of the union were there, had an opportunity to raise an issue with me, chose not to. So it's not based upon speculation, it's based upon experience, it's based upon knowledge of how negotiations go, we do have information, you know, from the union that said that the spirit in which that was brought up was to break the logjam in the negotiations, we have that documented. So, you know, we know the spirit of what some of this was, I also know that we have reached out and talked to the union, and we've made a lot of progress. But again, as this council charges me, I can negotiate a contract with the union tomorrow if I gave them everything they wanted. Is that in the best interest of the town? Is that in the best interest of the taxpayers? No. So, you know, negotiations are a process, and we have some changes in the union leadership, they're kind of having a little bit of growing pains, and some of this is growing pains. To jump and go overboard and not give, you know, your management team, the chief and myself, fair and adequate opportunity to address some of these concerns if we didn't address them adequately before, as I did this evening, we brought in folks from, you know, on the trash issue. I'm happy to go back, if the council's unhappy with the answer that you got, I'll go back and look at things in more in depth, but I just think to not communicate with the manager, what bothers me more than anything else, is that everybody signed it, and then it was presented to me as a fait accompli. And it's not fair to the, it's not fair to the management of this community, the financial management of this community, that has given no reason, in my opinion, no reason, to show that this type of oversight is necessary. Like I said, I had nothing to hide, never had anything to hide, and you know what? My integrity, they can come in, and I will give them, we've done the best we can with the resources we have, and if they go above and beyond, if they push this above and beyond, then I'll present it to the council. But, you know, when I've presented balanced budgets before, people have thought that that's pretty good. If, you know, I've misread the council, and now, you know, if they come back with all kinds of different things that need to be done, including potentially additional resources, I'll present. I mean, I know what the rules are, I know how to get the different finances to get additional money, it's override, that's what's allowed under Prop Two and a Half, and if the will of the council is there, and you want to go to the voters with it, I'll be with you. But I think that, you know, we've been on a course, and if we're doing a course change and a course correction, it'd be nice to communicate it in advance. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Counselor Markucci?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to make a few comments and observations. I signed the document, I read it, and I agreed with it, to me, it sounds very generic, if you will. Not out to attack anybody, and I certainly, as a council member, don't want my character attacked and put a negative spin on something, to me, that's very generic. I don't have an issue with the police chief and his management, and I don't have an issue with the town manager and the way he manages the town. But when the town manager says to me, as a counselor, listen, we can go ahead and do it, and if it costs us $300,000 because the police department isn't where it should be, then you know what? That's our responsibility to take it and do whatever. If he needs another $300,000, and the auditor comes in and says, hey, listen, chief, you know, I don't know how you've been running this department for the past ten or fifteen years with this budget, you need an override, that's fine. And Mr. Clark, respectfully, to mention a fifteen mile rule at this point, I don't understand. You know, I need some explanation, because if we've had police officers that are outside the fifteen mile radius and are living out of town, then what the heck have we been doing all this time? Why is it an issue now because they're living out of state and they're not in a radius of fifteen miles?
Just to clarify, that under civil service rules, under the strict interpretation of civil service rules, and I'm not a big civil service fan, as the chief will attest, but an officer has to live within fifteen miles. All of our officers, to the best of my knowledge, live within fifteen miles. There's a second element to that rule, they have to live within the Commonwealth of Mass.
But we've allowed them to live outside the Commonwealth of Mass knowingly.
By collective bargaining agreement.
Then it is what it is, if we've allowed it to happen.
If the auditor's office doesn't agree with that conclusion and wants to make a change, they can say, enforce it.
That's fine, and that's an opinion, I just think, you know, if you look in cities and towns, Mr. Clark, for a police officer to survive in Boston, they're going to live in New Hampshire, they're going to live out of state, I don't know, and maybe Chief Charette would know, how, I don't even know if that's a law that's still enforced, chief, to be honest with you, because of economics. Now, I'm not here to argue that, you know, it's going completely off the path, I just don't like the defense to an offense that we're presenting here this evening, because, in my opinion, this is very, like I said, it's generic, it's not out to attack anybody, it's accountability, and I don't like the thought of, for me, when someone throws out there that this all has to do with union negotiations, I couldn't care less about union negotiations within any department. When it comes before us as a council, then we vote on it, but to throw it here on the council table and say, you know, the timing of this, the timing of the letter from the police department, you know, people were saying, oh, it's because we're in union negotiations. We do something as a council, now it's gone back to union negotiations. It's always the timing, the timing, the timing, which I'm doing what I think is right and what is prudent. So when I read a document, and I put my signature to something, it's something that I truly believe in, do you have the right to change your mind? Yes, you do. But I believe in this, and I don't like to see a negative spin put on it, or an innuendo that questions my character or my integrity up here as a council member. That's what I take offense to, and I just don't want it thrown out there to the people of Southbridge, that this is something bad, and it's something evil that we're doing to the town of Southbridge, because I can assure you, it is not. Thank you.
Counselor Clements?
In looking at a number of these issues, they all seem to come, you know, safety because staffing issues or training issues, and to me, that's a safety standard, so I ask the chief, through you, Madam Chair, if possible, because, has there been any reports of safety concerns? That you're, I mean, according to the union contract that we deal with, any safety concern shall be brought to the attention of the union by any officer and shall be reported to the chief in writing by a person designated by the union within 24 hours of such notification. So these seem to be, you know, I did a little research because of what I was reading here, and these seem to be a lot of concern about safety or whatever, so I ask you that question, if you can answer that, I'd appreciate it.
May I ask the counsel's indulgence for one moment?
Sure.
After 32 years of being around doing this as a cop, I, in funny ways, I agree with everything you've all said. I'm very, very fortunate that I work with a lot of good cops. One of the qualities that makes a good cop is you're kind of strong-willed, you believe in what you're doing, and you have the character to back that up. Sometimes, when you get strong-willed people in the same room negotiating or discussing different issues, sometimes you butt heads a little bit. When that happens with strong-willed people, it sometimes takes a little while for people to cool off, talk it out, work it out, get through those issues. Counselor Clements, I apologize, because I know I'm not answering your question, but please hear me out. If the council would give us time to talk, a lot of this evening's decision is being based on a very old letter, and I'm not saying it's years old, it's a few months old, but a million things have happened in between, a lot of bridges have been built, a lot of things are going forward very well, and respectfully, that's why I'd like to push aside the question, Counselor Clements is right, but I don't want to stand here tonight and do anything negative. Too many good things have happened over the last couple of months. The only information you've gotten so far is a few months old, and it wasn't great when it started, and there was some, there was some strong-willed people making some strong-willed statements. What I'm requesting of all of you, and, you know, most of you I've talked to about this, let Mr. Clark and I talk to the union. We already have been, Chris has reached out to them already, I've been talking with all, and we've been working a lot on all of the little pieces that came to play, and I will be happy to go into details with all the specifics and the timing and all the notes I've gotten from the managers about, it's not really Danny giving back money, I can tell you, it's the memos from the manager saying, stop spending, we're putting a freeze on this, don't do this, don't do, and I respect all of that. And there's so many issues here, I could go on for hours, and I won't do that to you. So respectfully, I'm asking the thing that I asked most of you this week, let us talk about it. What my concern is, is those strong-willed people, and sometimes I fit that category too, because I, believe it or not, most of the time, I'm a pretty good cop, I don't want things getting said now that's going to drive a wedge between anybody. I provide for my department, and I don't often say mine, but after 32 years, I sort of feel like the Southbridge Police in mere one. I need the will of the council. I need the will of the council. I need the goodwill of the council of all of you. I don't kiss anybody's fanny to do that. We've had our disagreements. But I always try to make a reasonable, just, prudent, morally correct argument about where I'm going. And that's what I'm doing tonight. If I come up here and start saying, "Yep, you know, A should have happened, B should have happened, this should have happened, that should have happened," then I'm burning those bridges we've been building. I don't want to do that. So respectfully, I'll keep this brief. I know it's late. There's a lot of good points here tonight. A lot of folks are hitting on things very important. Other than my family that you saw here a few minutes ago, there's not much in the world that's more important to me than what I do. So respectfully, I request, give Mr. Clark and I a little time to talk. I think you'll see a lot of the information that you've been given has completely changed. A lot of the thoughts have completely changed. And in the spirit of Conrad Vandal, I can save you a lot of money if you give me a few minutes to talk. So I'm just asking this. Go back to, go back to a subcommittee or wherever the council would like it. Give us some time to talk. Let Mr. Clark bring that information to you. Ask us anything under the sun. And if for some reason, that's not comfortable, that's not appropriate, if you think there's any reason, by all means, by all means, bring in whatever you think's necessary. My big concern, and the only concern I'll voice tonight, is that I do think if you do something like this, and I can tell you, there's been pieces that have happened already, it does start driving that wedge in. It is bad for morale. I can tell you without question. And I won't go into persons or specifics because I don't want to. I'll be happy to later if you'd like. I will, by all means, I'll talk for the next two hours. I know you know I'm all capable of it. But respectfully, with the utmost care for everybody concerned, all the officers have, you know, families and children and the rest and nobody wants to get beat up here, nobody. The people I work with are second to none. Give me a chance to work with them. I know they'll work with me. I know they will. I know they want to talk with Mr. Clark. They've said so. Unfortunately, when Mr. Clark did reach out, there happened to be, once a year, there's this big union thing down in the cave and a lot of the officers were going there. That's the only reason it hasn't happened in the last couple of weeks. Give us a little time. I'll save you a lot of money. Not that that's the primary thing. It's not. The primary thing is doing the job. And that's going to keep getting done too. It is getting done. And that, to me, is paramount with all of this because you start throwing a lot of things in there and the next thing you know, there's a lot of interference with what we've got to do day to day. That becomes the only discussion at roll call. It's the only thing going on with the midnight officers. I've seen it happen. I've seen it happen to other towns. It is not good. So anyway, I'll leave it at that. I thank you for your consideration, however the vote goes. Thank you. And I apologize I didn't answer the question.
I'll ask you later.
I will answer it.
Thank you. Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with everything that Counselor Markucci said. The other thing I'll add is, an audit is just that. It's an audit. They don't come back. It's not something where they force anybody to do anything. They write the report, the management letter, like is done by the regular audit that looks at the different agencies that we have done. I'm concerned at the pushback on this because, you know, I would think they'll come in and they'll find reasons to commend the police department. The whole idea is to put these issues to bed. And I don't like how it keeps going back to just that letter because, for me, part of the questions come from, we have a fleet of 22 police crews, 22 vehicles. I want to know if that's accurate, if it needs to be more, if it could be less. And the letter itself is a communication to the town manager and then ultimately came to us that states there are some concerns. Whether they're valid or not, that's what we're trying to find out. And I think it's just best to take it out of all parties' concern, have a third party come in and look at it. Tell us what's great. Tell us what's working good. And then it's going to be a written report and then we're not obligated to do. I mean, I'll back up what I say and what I vote on. If it ends up being an override, the people will have the final say in some vote whether that override passes or whatnot. I don't think it's going to rise to that. And as far as coming up with the money, we did not budget for a sweeper, yet we came up with $172,000 for it. We did not budget for two backhoes, but we came up with $250,000. We're being penny wise and pound foolish, in my judgment. We have a chance to sit here, have somebody come in here and tell us what's working great, what needs improvement, and that's it. It's very benign. Let them do it. Audits happen all the time. They happen in Counsel Regis's world. They happen in my world and nobody's, you know, nobody's heads roll. And I don't think anybody should be worried about it. I think it's going to validate our processes and that's what I'm hoping to see out of it. So I'm going to support it. Thank you.
Counsel Lanzin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to start off by saying I have the utmost respect for the police chief. And I do have the utmost respect for the town manager. When this was presented to me, first of all, I had a hard time reading it because it was late in the evening. So I didn't sign it for that reason. Took it home, read it, looked at it, signed it because I believed in it. It's just a coincidence. This coming Wednesday, I'm having an audit in my facility. I'm not going to say I can't have an audit. I'm having an audit. I said this to the chief. They're going to find things that I've done wrong. I know that. They're going to give me a list of things and they're going to say, "Fix it." And that's what I'm going to do. To me, audits are refreshing. I'm not saying to him that he's running his department wrong by any chance. Okay? I said, and I'll say it again live, so the police union, that everyone keeps on saying, "This is police union stuff." I, just one member, believe everyone's equal. If we gave this to the DPW, that's what I believe we give to the police department. So if anyone thinks that the police department has, the patrolmen and stuff have Dave Lanzin's ear because they're playing tactics, shame on the policeman. Okay? So I don't, I don't believe in tactics of negotiations. I understand it gets intense on negotiations. I understand as a manager, you're going to do things to people that they don't agree with because you're a manager. You're being told and you're being led and the police chief is being led from the town manager. Okay? The police chief has to go back and lead his men in that direction too. So I understand the process on this. To me, and again, this is just an audit. It's, I think we're making it bigger than it has to be. Yes, they're going to come back with some findings. Yes, we're going to have to deal with some things. Yes, it's probably going to be some money involved. And so be it. And I don't like to spend. But we just spent $35,000 that I believe in to rip down some houses. I believe in it. So if I'm spending $35,000 to rip down vacant houses that are safety issues, this might cost $20,000. Good investment. Good investment. Not just for the police department. Maybe down the road, we should look at other departments. It's refreshing. But if I didn't believe in it, I would not have signed it. Bottom line, would not have signed it. Everyone had an opportunity to read it and the intent was, so everyone could read it. If I didn't believe in it, I don't sign it. Somewhere along the way, in about three weeks, and everyone has their right to, change their mind, but maybe we shouldn't have signed it in the first place then.
I agree with you.
So I don't think this is bad as it's being made out to be. I said to the chief, and again, I basically wouldn't say it to him now. I said it to him already. I don't think it's a bad thing. He might disagree with me. I'm still going to respect him tomorrow. I don't believe there's really a lot of things. I'm not going to lie. He called me. We talked. He asked me, you know, "How do you feel about this? Please give me an opportunity to put it in a subcommittee meeting." And I said, "Well, I really don't, I don't think it needs to go there, but I'm okay with it." But what's there to discuss in a subcommittee meeting? It is what it is. It's right here. So again, respectfully, chief, I'm sorry, but I just, I am going to support this tonight and I believe it's the right thing to do. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Counsel Regis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I said at the outset, I signed this document because I think it's important for this body sometimes to put forth a united front. Well, obviously, it's not, as Counsel Nicola said. It's not a united front. So, and this was presented to me in a way that I thought it was. I have a problem with that. Also, we can't kid ourselves. This is not just an audit. We are asking the Office of the State Auditor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to conduct an audit. Just an audit is the annual audit that this town undergoes every year, as other communities do, every year. And we are required to by state law. Mr. Clark mentioned the fact that the town of Southbridge, each year, chooses a department for our auditors to go into and to take a better look, a deeper look at. Last year, that was the police department. Are we saying that they are independent auditors? Their opinion doesn't count? Do you read the management letters? Are there comments related to the police department? Are they, that's one of the most important management tools that you have is that management letter. It's a tool for us when we read the management letter every year. And then the following year, following up on the recommendations, making sure that something's happening with them. They're being addressed. If they're not, that's a concern. We need to talk about that. This is not just an audit. This is something else. And I'm very uncomfortable because there continues to be reference made to that letter. That letter. I'm sorry, that letter from the union. That's personnel. That's union negotiations. That's none of our business. None of our business. That's what the management is for. That's what the police chief is for. I'm not, I'm not voting for this. I'm very uncomfortable with this. I didn't like how it was presented to me as, you know, as a united front. It's not, obviously. This is not just an audit. Respectfully to all my colleagues, it's not. It's being presented that way, it's not. And I have a huge problem with this. We're getting involved in something that I refuse to get involved in. I do not take phone calls from employees, chain of command. I don't get the phone calls anymore because I've said that to employees. "Don't call me. This is none of my business as an elected counselor. It's not my job." Manager, department head, whoever, deal with it there. Doesn't come to me. I'm not going to vote for this. Thank you.
Anybody else? I saw a lot of hands over here. Does anybody else have something?
I have something quick to add. I am disappointed that this didn't come through subcommittee because I feel like there was a lot of discussion that we could have had there that would have spared people time who were not interested in this issue. I do, I am inclined to support this audit. I realize that it's more exhaustive than the annual audit done by the town. But there were concerns that I had that were obviously not covered in the town audit, specifically relating to information management. I know that when I had gotten my copy of my records request involving training records, they were individual photocopies of certificates and the manager had been made this comment about needing to potentially shut down the police operation to be able to fulfill my records request. And I think that's probably not an appropriate course of action, which leads me to believe that maybe there's something we can do to improve here. And I don't want anybody to feel like I'm anti-town manager, anti-police chief, or I'm in bed with the police union or anything. I just, I feel like this is something that would potentially be a good thing to look at, although I do wish we could have had it go through subcommittee first. Thank you.
I'm going to start with, I guess, the amended version of this vote. It read, I believe, and I'm going to ask Counselor Moriarty to help me out with this. "Vote to request the Office of the State Auditor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts conduct an audit of certain activities of Southridge Police Department for the period July 1, 2007 through June 30, 2012." And how did you finish that?
"In the event that the State Auditor's office deems that any of the audit objectives are out of their purview, out of the purview of the State Auditor's office, that the town shall, through an RFP, secure the services of a police department management consultant."
Okay, that's the amendment.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Yes, Counselor.
We had a motion to send to subcommittee in a second. So we have to dispose of that one first before we go to the amendment, before we go to the original.
All right. Then let's go to, we'll start from the back and work our way back to where we should be. Hold that thought. The motion on the floor is to bring this matter to a subcommittee. I have a motion and a second. Can I have a roll call on that first, please? Counsel Markucci?
No.
Counsel McDonald?
No.
Counsel Moriarty?
No.
Counsel Nicola?
No.
Counsel Pellequin?
No.
Counsel Regis?
No.
Counsel Vandal?
No.
Counsel Clements?
Yes.
Counsel Lanzin?
No.
One yes, eight no. Okay. Now, before us is the amendment to this vote that was just read. And I believe everybody should have retained that. I have a motion on that and a second. Can I have a roll call, please? Counsel McDonald?
Yes.
Counsel Moriarty?
Yes.
Counsel Nicola?
No.
Counsel Pellequin?
Counselor Pellicwen?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
No.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
No.
Counselor Langvin?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Six yes, three no?
Okay, that's the amendment. So here comes the vote. Vote to request the Office of the State Auditor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts conduct an audit of certain activities of Southbridge Police Department for the period July 1st, 2007 through June 30th, 2012. Counselor Moriarty, finish it.
In the event the State Auditor's Office deems any of the audit objectives to be out of the purview of the State Auditor's Office, the town shall, through a RFP, secure the services of a Police Department management consultant.
Motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
No.
Counselor Pellicwen?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
No.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
No.
Counselor Langvin?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Six yes, three no?
Agenda item number 17, Counsel's Forum. Counselor Langvin?
Nothing this evening, Madam Chair, thank you.
Counselor Regis?
I just wanted to apologize for being tardy, Madam Chair, and to thank you for reading my minutes.
You're welcome. Counselor Maria, Markucci?
I'm all set this evening, thank you.
Counselor Pellicwen?
A few minutes ago, I had requested that the town manager see if you could add the Economic Development Subcommittee's meetings to the lists that we get internally on the council of upcoming meetings, and in response to that, I got a comprehensive memo from his secretary breaking down how she goes about assembling that list, and I guess she goes and she gets it from the calendar of meeting postings from the clerk's office at, or approximately around 4:30 PM on the day that we get our council packets, which is great, and I thank her for that information. But subsequent to that, I then went to the town clerk's office and asked if I could have any sort of, what, just what was there in terms of meeting postings, meeting agendas, meeting minutes, and I was kind of disappointed to learn that the Economic Development Commission has never publicly posted any of their meetings, and I would like to see them come into compliance with the open meeting law in the future, moving forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Could you please relay that? Thank you.
Familiar with it?
Counselor Vandal?
I would just like to encourage the people to go out on Thursday, October 4th, and vote in favor of the Bay Path, it's something we really need. We haven't done anything up there, and the motto is, pay now or pay later. If we vote for it now, the state's gonna reimburse us quite a bit, and if we don't vote for it now, we're gonna have to do a lot of it at our own expense. Thank you, that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just would like to express some concern, the last couple of meetings with the presentations. Tonight, we didn't start into the main part of our agenda till two hours after the start of the meeting, and I just would, just ask us if we'd look at maybe doing things a little differently, so we don't have so many late nights and whatnot. That's all I have, thank you, Madam Chair.
Counselor Moriarty?
Just very briefly, just a few days ago, the Relay for Life group had their year-end meeting, and it was announced that they officially raised more than $3 million over the last 15 years through the last fundraising, the last relay in June, the final numbers came in, so I think that's a big accomplishment. They noted that of the more than 250 relays across New England, Southbridge ranked 24th, which to me is remarkable, considering, I know there are towns, Auburn, for example, we completely blew them out of the water, they just had their relay recently. We more than doubled what they raised, from a much more affluent community, and I think that's a great sign, it's something that positive that we can do in this town and some of the surrounding towns. And just with that, of their, they have a tri-chair set up, two of their chairs are back, but they kind of have term limits there, so one of them, Ron Ravenell, who's actually a Sturbridge resident, through those limits, is kind of on the outside looking in, in terms of chairmanship. I just wanted to kind of commend and thank him for his service over the last several years, and good luck to those folks going forward. That's all.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Clements?
Nothing this evening.
Discussion of the next meeting date?
That would be Monday, October 15th, 2012, 7:00 PM, right here in chambers. The delay is due to the holiday, Columbus Day is on the 8th, so we're gonna push it out to the 15th, so have a couple of weeks.
Thank you. Agenda item number 19. Vote to enter into executive session according to Mass. General Law 39, Section 23B, to review executive session minutes regarding collective bargaining, litigation, purchase, exchange, taking lease, or value of real property, discipline or dismissal brought against an individual, and if matter is concluded, reconvene, vote to release said minutes, and adjourn.
Madam Chair, due to the late hour, I would recommend that we move that off to the October 15th meeting, we can pick up where we left off.
Second.
Wonderful. Can I have a roll call on that?
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Pellicwen?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
No.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Okay, and item 20, adjournments.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Meeting's adjourned.[1762.33]